All right, I got six thirty. We're gonna call the regular meeting in the county council to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Seth?
Here.
Andrew.
Here.
Ty Kirking.
Here.
Emma.
Here.
Todd Spade.
Here.
Cindy.
Here.
John.
Here.
Crystal.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
And Justin.
Here. I'll do pledge of allegiance. All right. Item number two is approval of the August twelfth, twenty twenty five, regular council minutes.
This is Crystal and I'd move approval for those minutes with no additions or corrections.
I don't say gonna.
Got a motion in a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nope, nope, sorry. They were all, yeah, all ayes. All right. Item number three, council announcements. Any member of the council have anything they would wish to bring up right now? No? All right. Item number four is the first period for public comment. So if you're a member of the public, wish to make a comment, you can do so now. State your name, address, and try to keep them to three minutes. If you're here to speak on an agenda item, I know you guys will get to you down later on down the line here. So. Nobody in house? If there's anybody online? Now would be the time?
Think you're good, man.
All right. Hearing none, we will move on then to item number five, which is a public hearing on vacation of portion of Dunlap Street, Western Avenue and an alley as laid out on the plat of County West Edition, coming from the plan commission, and with that will open the public hearing.
Sure. So you remember back quite a while ago, we were trying to have Daryl Skrupke be able to own the property behind his house. And it started us on a long trail of trying to figure out how to how the street was formed, because that matters to when it gets vacated, who it goes to, which was the city. And then when we started working through it, it was suggested by the county surveyor that we not just vacate that one section, but really truly take care of vacating the rest of the streets on that plat, because we can, you know, have unforeseen complications. Some of it's in the Park Bowl, that kind of thing. And so essentially what this is, is just vacating what is remaining. There had been portions vacated before for Parkview Manor. But for the most part, it just kind of was never utilized as it was platted. It was a subdivision actually the county created, and it was like eighteen ninety-two or something, pretty old. So that basically.
Yeah, that's the long and short of it. So this, I believe, is the county's map that shows all the different subdivision plaits and the parcel in question is sort of down here in this area, I believe. And so you can kind of get a sense from this that a lot of the remnants of the old subdivision are showing up here. And so again, as Sarah said, this is just the general area that we're looking at, and it's all part of what we need to do to clean up the issue so that we can transfer the land to Mr. Skrupke with essentially a clean title.
Yeah, because we can't offer, like, we don't own public right of way, so we need to vacate if it's not public right of way, then we can dead transfer it over. I guess the only thing notable is that it does exclude that part, which is currently South Street. So we, because it does currently extend into South Street, so it would be basically like that pinkish area that's like in between all of those subdivision lots that are platted there. So, oh yes, and then the other portion that had previously been vacated was for the Kelodowski property.
And we did do a preliminary resolution to vacate this. If you remember back, it was in June twenty-fourth of twenty-five that we did that preliminary, and we had to go through the motions of going to plan commission. And then coming back after a certain amount of time, all of the neighbors were notified, all that. So that all has been done and plan commission did send it with their blessings. And so there is a resolution that I sent out this afternoon that kind of that George Hopkins had drafted, and then this would get recorded at the register of deeds, the official vacation.
Thank you. So this is the public hearing portion. So if any members of the public, whether here or online, have anything they'd like to add, now would be the time for that. If not, nobody online? All right. Hearing none of that, we will close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item number six, which is discussion with possible action on resolution to vacate portion of Dunlap Street, West Ave. Avenue and an alley as laid out on the plat of County West Edition.
Cindy, I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution to vacate portion of Dunlap Street, West, what Dunlap Street, West Avenue and an alley is laid out on the plat of County West Edition.
This is Crystal, all second.
All right, we've got motion in a second. Any other questions? That's simple voice phone work. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving right along here. Item number seven, operators license approvals.
Okay, we had two that went to public safety last week. One was for Diana Heitman for Aldi, was a new one, took the class August second or seventh. And a second one was for Derek Moran for the Fortney, also a new one, took the class June twenty-seventh. They went through the background checks, came back fine, and public safety forwarded him with their approval.
This is Todd. I move to approve the operator license.
I don't say gonna. You got a motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number eight, discussion with possible action on the Verona Chamber Wine Walk application scheduled for September sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, this also went to public safety last week. It is on September sixth from six PM to eight PM. They had the listing of locations, and they're already actually out selling tickets on that because public safety gave them their approval. So we're just looking for, it's basically the same as what they've had in the past. Nothing has changed and everything went through fine to public safety. So just looking for your guys' approval as well.
This is Crystal. I'll move approval of the Verona Chamber Wine Walk application scheduled for September sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Say, do you have a second?
We've got a motion in a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number nine. Discussion with possible action, is that right? Yes, discussion with possible action on Nelson Center curb for Center Avenue project and all curb and sidewalk for Center Avenue project. I think we'll have Sarah start.
Um, well, I just wanted to walk through all of this. So I think I'll start putting up. I put a few slides together just to keep my thoughts organized, but I want to make sure that, like, we understand how we got here. So that was kind of where I was gonna start here. And I need to share my screen. Okay, so so we've been working through Center Avenue, obviously from some time. It's been on the works for quite a while. And we finally were able to get the go ahead with figuring out our funding. And so for the most part, I think it's a pretty uneventful project. I mean, there's not a lot of changes that we've made for the most part throughout the project. And then this section, there was a lot of things that were identified in the design that were like different than maybe what you would standard see. So we put together, we, as in Matt Mukow and I, who is also on the call, what we thought made sense in terms of trying to balance needs, and we had approached Nelson's back in April to walk through, because we knew there was a lot there and sort of to see what made sense. And we went through a number of things. Originally, what was the point that seems of different opinions was the five parking stalls. So that was what we originally had as the agenda item. And then we added, because there was some further conversation about road widths. And so I just wanted to know, like, we were intending to bring it forward, and the idea behind that is that you guys are the decision makers. And so when I get in the design, I'll go through like how we got there. At some point, there's like conflicting needs, you know, like, we're looking at everybody's needs as the users use the roadway. And so some decisions need to be made about like where you want that balance to lie. And so that is where you all come in, right? And so I'm gonna just present the situation and then give you some options, which don't necessarily have to be exactly how they are either. And then you can, you know, decide how you'd like to proceed. So just as in general, you know, we take a roadway, we look at it as it is, and then see if there's anything that's different than you would design a normal road, right? And as I've mentioned here, right, you were looking at like motor vehicle, traffic pedestrians, bicycles, the parking, how businesses operate, so whether like for their deliveries is always a big thing, how their patrons use it, and then just like the general like ease of transportation. And so like I said, when things aren't like always in balance, then I don't get to make the decision, you guys do. But here's my job is to show you like what those balances are, right? And so just here is like, I wanted to just give like a general take on what we look at when we're looking at this. So obviously, the top left-hand corner is the roadway that's Nelson Agar Center on Seven Center Avenue. And then the other down on the bottom of the screen is Rock Avenue. And I compare them a lot in my mind, because they're, in my mind, similar kinds of roadways. They're not Main Street, but they're both one block off Main Street. They connect to all the like side streets. And they have like Rock Avenue. Trina's not here, but it's a pretty busy street, right? There's a lot of action that's happening there, too. And so normally, we would look at like something that looks more like what's on Rock Avenue there, right? So you know, notably like curb line. And like I said, true curb and gutter is a pretty standard design. Over the years, we've been, council and committee has asked to look for green space where we can make green space, even if there wasn't green space already. So that was a big one on Rock Avenue, because I don't know if folks remember back in time, it would be like nineteen or two thousand twelve-ish, thirteen, we did this project. It didn't look like this originally. And there was a lot of conversations that we had about curb, or excuse me, grass. And then the other thing is that there is a bike path. So like one of the things that we looked at is that like parallel on both sides. So that was, you know, the things that we go through. And I think it's pretty obvious, like, there's quite a difference between the two. And so, you know, one less definition of the road, and so like it just naturally as designers, we go, okay, like, what's missing and what do we do from here? Because hopefully we are not going to come back here for probably about forty to fifty years, right? And so we really do need to plan as we're gonna look in the future. And so that's kind of some of the things that we look through when we go through it, right? So one of the, obviously, we want to improve safety. And so a lot of the changes in the industry has gone away from opening everything up to like making things feel a little bit tighter so that people slow down. I know that one we had at Public Works Committee, we, there was a conversation about it being like, looking more like Nelson Parkway. But then you get sort of the opposite effect, right, where people are speeding up. And so like, you know, that's where I see the signboard a lot for speeding is, it's just a lot easier to feel like you can really open up and go, right? So there's a big change in the industry as a whole to look at traffic calming, and a lot of that's just like bringing things in closer. Reduction of conflict points. So, you know, when I look at a road, I'm looking at like, is there any extra things happening here when we're looking at it, right? So like, obviously, there's the intersection and the driveways. But is there like other things happening? And so we've been working a lot with businesses over the last couple of years to do that kind of thing. So Quick Trip on the North End closed sixty feet of their driveway, still really big. But that was in conversations with us about like trying to minimize the like amount of areas that people can come out on the road, right? Because again, that's always like every time you have like a new spot to look at. Okay, we call it conflicts, or but like a spot where two cars, a vehicle and a person has to make a decision about like who's going where and negotiating that. Wonder State did that this year, too. So we ended up having with the construction project, Wonder State closed that whole parking area in the front. We'd originally approached them about closing Main Street, so they were backing into Main Street parking. I don't know if you remember that, but that was really hard to negotiate. I've tried it as a in my own vehicle many times, and every time I did it, I was like, this is a a really challenging spot to back out onto Main Street. And so they closed it, and they actually were willing to close the side driveway as well. That was sort of came out of it. They wanted to add parking on the street. And so that was, we kind of worked together with them, and we still work with them, like Rick and Chad and I about like having it as a loading zone or a temporary parking rather than permanent there. But that's kind of like the process we go through. And then Michael Corr's parking lot, it's right on that corner of Jefferson and Main Street, no longer goes into Main Street. It just comes out that side on Jefferson. So it's, it's not isolated. We're like looking all over at like how we can reduce moments where people end up having to make those decisions. Curb, I bring that up. I know sometimes it's like, well, why are we even putting this stuff in? It costs money and whatnot. I briefed it down. There's, you can look online. There's a bunch of reasons why you put curb in, and you know, you can read here, like, part of it's safety, right? So it's a barrier. And we've talked about that before, where it's defining the road, vehicles can't easily cross over it, and then it protects things that are happening that are in the right of way between, you know, like sidewalks, boulevard areas, things that are happening not on the actual driving surface. Because that's another big thing that's changed in the industry is the concept of multimodal transportation, that the road right of way isn't just for cars, it's for anybody, whatever mode of transportation you're using. And then traffic management. So it's just like, it does help people feel like they have a definition to where they're going. It also helps like inform where people should be parking or not parking. So we mark sidewalk or curbs with like gold or just have it open for white, or sometimes we'll also delineate off of those areas. And then also, it does serve a purpose of totally different to these, which is just drainage control, right? So we there's different variations on what you can do to control the gutter. But the gutter alone isn't always doing a wonderful job of keeping all the water in. And so the curb itself does provide that extra protection. And we worked with some landowners who've, like, for example, on Washington, South Washington, where they had a lot of water coming from the street, and they had a driveway approach, but we put that full curb in to help control that water, and it's made a significant difference for them. So those are like the curb parts. And then just in general, over, so I've been here fourteen years now, and one of the, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about sidewalks. What do we do about sidewalks? Do we take sidewalks out? Because that's often a request. What do we do with them when they're discontinuing, meaning like only portions of them are? And boy, probably eight years ago, we made a directive that like, we're gonna try to encourage sidewalks to be filled in where sidewalks are. So connectivity of the system. And then, of course, we did the bike and pedestrian plan, which also suggested more people interested in bike networks. Obviously, that's not every street, but like core areas that we're looking at. Putting people on Main Street's not really a good option for bicycle and pedestrians, right? And then the other directive that we've talked to, and this came up with on Rock Avenue, was like promoting the green whenever possible, just trying to get color. And color's great, but also it provides an impervious surface or a pervious surface. So one of the things that we fight with in stormwater drainage is trying to make sure that like when everything has to run off the surface and there's no place for it to percolate into, you're just getting you're in in increasing your demand on your system. So these are just all the things that we look at. And so I just wanted to give you insight as to why we looked at doing it originally, the way we did was because we were trying to like figure out like how to meet all of the needs, because this is a highly used area, and it has a lot of demand. So it's kind of like Main Street where it's like, it's really hard. If I felt like there was like a a perfect solution that met everyone's needs, we probably wouldn't be sitting here, right? But it's not. And so we do have to make choices. You do have to make choices. And so I'm just gonna try to help you figure out what that choice is. And of course, just to like go through again, like this is where we're at. And so like almost most of these kind of points are some things that we, we are looking to address, because a lot of these are missing. Okay, so it kind of got messy at the Public Works meeting, because there's just so many things that kind of got brought up. Like I mentioned, originally, we were kind of talking about isolative situation of like the parking stalls that back onto main or onto Center Avenue. But then the idea of, if you look at like the, well, you probably didn't see the Public Works Amendment, but all of that latter language was added, like all curb and whatnot on Center Avenue, which let the conversation be really fluid for what the needs were, but it also made it kind of hard for people to make decisions, I think, because there's like so many components that we were trying to decide about. So one of the things that got brought up from Nelson's and is the road width. So one of the tricky things about the situation, I'll just go back one, is that because there's no curb, the way that the road has been used is different than you normally would see on a road, right? So like, if you can see back here, you know, there's a oh, my arrow's not working like I want it to. If you look back, there is a vehicle parked like half on the side or the boulevard area and half on the street area. It's pulling itself out of the road. And so originally, we pretty much the entire project, we haven't changed the width of the road. So we have like thirteen blocks and we've kept them the same. And so, you know, originally, we're like, yep, thirty-eight feet makes sense. It's actually a fairly large sized road. But that was what we like the first iteration had that. And so what that means is you usually say eight foot of parking width. So you got eight foot, and then your driving lanes are in that ten to twelve range. So ten, ten, and eight was sort of the original version. And you know, there is like a tremendous amount of traffic. The vehicles are very large that go down there. Sometimes it's good to see how things work before changing them. So like, we can set the curb, but we do have some things that we can change, like whether we like parking there or not. So I tend to not go for that right away and see how things go, because possibly we'll get some of that calming happening. But I think it seemed like across the board between like police or fire, wanting to make sure their trucks can fit in, and then also your like traffic that's there. The motion that came from Public Works said that we would have no parking on one side. Part of the reason that it was there is there wasn't really a lot of parking. Like if you put curb on that side, which is the same side that the multi-use path would be on, so I would highly recommend as much protection of that path as possible. You're not losing a tremendous amount of parking, but you're gaining a lot. So like now you don't have that parking lane on that side. And so then your configuration of your road, now you're at eight foot on one side of parking, but then you've got fourteen and a half foot driving lanes, which is really big. So I just kind of wanted to, which is great, we're gaining, right? And so just so that people understand, so this was like the first, this is what we call a cross section. It's the way we lay out a road, and this is how it was originally. So you got your, oh, ten and a half. I misspoke. Ten and ten, but ten and a half and ten and a half, right, was twenty-one. And then this is what we're currently having in front of us as the option to remove parking from one side. So again, we really open up the driving lanes. I actually think it's a great concession. It does, does it have to be like this? Not necessarily, but I think we gain so much from one move, right? Like eight, eight feet is our savings of space. And then just so that you have like a kind of an idea of like where, what we've done on other projects recently. So like this is Northeast Avenue. And Northeast Avenue has eleven-foot travel lanes, right? That's where we put the parking only on one side. We removed parking from the other side. We put the bike lanes in. We have, if you can see, the bike lanes are four foot and five on one side, just because we were we were restrained with how much space we could widen the road. And we wanted to make sure that the bikes that were closest to the parking lane had more space. But so kind of think about that. I mean, when you're driving down Northeast Avenue, eleven-foot travel lanes are, feel pretty decent. People do drive on the line sometimes, but like it's a fair size. And then this is, it's a little harder, you gotta do the math a bit more. So this is Rock Avenue, Rock Avenue. We didn't really widen it much. Really at all. It's just, it was already laid out that way. So we were kind of following what was already there. So it's forty-eight, which means you have twenty-five foot as your travel space. So that's about twelve, twelve and a half feet. So just in comparison to like the other areas that we have in town, our fourteen and a half, the total twenty-nine foot driving lane is, I would say, should be very sufficient for what we have. So that's one element. Like I said, that was the motion from the Public Works Committee is to do that top version there. And so I think that's a great game. But you guys can decide how you would like to see that, right? The other one that was talked about, there's three sort of main ones is curb. And so obviously, I talked about curb before, because curb is something that, you know, serves a great purpose, especially if you're an engineer, you know, and you're worried about public works and how things are taken care of on the street. You, you know, this is a good way to keep things in the right space. And so on the current design, it showed curb on both sides. So there's been question about like two, so right now, we don't have curb. Whether we put mountable curb. And so the current layout has no curb. So I, and I'm gonna show a slide, because one of the things I realized when talking to you yesterday was that there's like, I think we're talking about, we're using two different words to talk about three different things. So I wanted to make sure, I'll show that in a second. But our current layout is actually like a driveway curb. And then if you need more space, we've talked about like the mountable option. I would say that like based on the new layout, if we go with parking on one side, I don't, I'm not worried about space. I feel like that is a lot of space out there. And then on the east side. So part of the reason we wouldn't just make this a forty-one foot road is that we just are restricted by what's out there. So you know, from before, we ended up with the loading dock is actually eleven feet in the right of way. So we run out of room to like widen the road, right? And so we just have a lot of like those like limiting factors. But right against it, there's about four feet. And so I guess one thing to consider when you're looking at the curb on that side is that we're not really gaining four feet, because in front of the loading dock, you would later. But because you only have so much space and you, people aren't gonna drive up like flush to the loading dock. Okay, so this is what I wanted to just clarify, and we can go back to it, but so this far left is what your like standard curb and gutter cross section looks like. It's got your six inches of, well, foot rise, but six inches that's standing above the curb line, and then you've got six inches deep. And so sometimes they call it a barrier curb. This is your, your standard curb that you see in most cases. And I would say just as a general rule, this is where you go unless there's something that is different. And I guess the something that was different would notably be always a driveway, right? A driveway has a curb that's pretty flat. I mean, it basically doesn't exist. But there's a little bit of a like a valley in it, because it is trying to still hold water, right? It needs to function as a gutter. And so this is truly what's out there right now. So I just want to make sure when we're talking about it, we're all on the same page, because I've also, we've talked about manable curb, which is the one on the far right, and I'm, it's kind of hard to see. I have a better image of it soon, but so it is, it's shorter and it is rounder. But there's still something to go over, right? So like, if you're talking mountable curb, and I think I, I'm looking at you, because I know your driveway's like this, right? Like you have like a you're, you know, you go up. Like you have like a, you're, you know, you go up when you're on a mountable curb. So. I would hate to say mountable curb when you really meant gutter. And then when we go out on the road and build it, we ended up not doing what was intended. So I just wanted to make sure that was.
Sarah, are you going to tell us what the benefit is, is of the mountable versus just the driveway gutter?
Well, I mean, you certainly get more retention of water in it because it's higher. And then you're going to feel more. More something happening to your vehicle. You're going to know you're going over it more than you would. Like on your driveway gutter. The driveway gutter kind of isn't supposed to feel like you're really changing your grade so much, whereas like the. Mountable curb, it allows you to drive over without having like the thump. But it's still like, you still feel like, you know, you're still going up four inches from the bottom of the gutter. Okay, um, and then the last thing is what we've been talking about is whether there's sidewalk on the east side. So the current design did include sidewalk. So I guess just some notes that I have about like a consideration of it. It is a tricky one. The sidewalk there is, has a lot of things that. Are there that are not ideal. But there are some things to consider in it. So we have talked about adding the sidewalk. To the block between church and Parkinson and we've talked like with Nelson's about that. It currently doesn't have any sidewalk, but it has the. Uh driveway approach or curb approaches for the sidewalk and it's currently grass. So it's. A good opportunity. There's nothing currently physically there and I can show some things too. Um, the other thing that I think when I, as I go through this and think really hard about like all the things we're considering. Is that Nelson's for a long time has asked us for a mid-block crosswalk, but that's somewhat of a misnomer because. It's not, it's sort of mid-block. So Gillette itself is a street on one side. The other side of Gillette was closed. Um, and that would be like, sort of like they're behind their building area that they're using. So it's kind of a mid-block crosswalk, but their, their um. Employees and whoever's crossing against that parking lot across do cross. And I know that it's been challenging. Um, and I would say that if you are, if we're really thinking at all about a mid-block crosswalk, we really do need to think about having. A path for people to get to that crosswalk, like meaning a sidewalk for them to go to instead of having them. Not go and into anything except maybe the property, um, just something to consider.
I'm not sure I understand where you're talking about the mid-block crosswalk.
Yeah, well, let's, let's, we'll, we'll get some images here. So. Uh, so this is our GIS and I can pull up the GIS to zoom in better later. Uh, but I just wanted to give you like the overall picture. So. Yellow, orangey color is all the sidewalks. And this is sort of like a snapshot of the area, but you can see that for the most part. Um, with the exception of these really narrow side streets that we have that are church and Parkinson and Gillette, we generally have sidewalk. It's because it's an older area of town. And in the old area of towns, they generally put sidewalk in. There historically hasn't been sidewalk on that north block. So I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting that it's. Something that was there and it was taken away. Um, but it is like a gap in. A pathway, right? And so that is part of the reason it was put in and talked about was that it, it is. Requiring people to cross the street to be on a pedestrian area. And I guess I'm not as worried about the crossing maybe up here on like Parkinson, but at Decker. To cross center, there's already so much going on with vehicles turning that to add like intentionally making people cross. And for the most part, like people will cross further south if they're just kind of like coming up center, but not everyone is coming up center. Some people are coming from. Decker on the east side. And so we are putting the bike path in. So that would be, and I should say bike path because that's not correct. It's a multi-use path. You can both walk and bike on it. Uh, it's only eight foot wide, so it's truly not really. The correct width. It is your absolute minimum that you can have for a multi-use path, but we just don't really have a lot of extra. Real estate there to take up, right? There's, we have to think about um the driveways and the width of the road. And so this is sort of, we usually come to this sort of metal ground that a multi-use path is going to be eight foot wide.
I think it's already been used as a multi-use trail. It's just, you know, it's just small.
Absolutely. I think about.
Like a lot of pedestrian bikes on that.
Yeah, I think about uh my kids start at City Hall in the summer and they go all these different places. And one of them is they want to go to the co-op. And I think about like, how are you getting there? They certainly don't want you driving on Center Avenue to get there. So people use that already. And so in this picture, we do have the sidewalk there because that was what, how we designed it originally. I haven't changed this image um. To have a question mark there, but you know, it does complement it on both sides. Um, but just so you do know that it's not like sidewalk and sidewalk on both sides. It is a multi-use path that will go the length of the project on the west side. Um, and I just wanted to remind everybody, again, this is only uh our study, but what was talked about was. A couple of things I thought was just important is like, one, it was identified as an area to fill in with sidewalk. But also, if you look at the red dotted line, that's Parkinson. So Parkinson is a really narrow street. So is Gillette and so is church. But it's also like, if you go and you're a pedestrian and you're trying to cross Main Street, you basically go to Decker or you go to Broadway. You don't really have anywhere in between that really feels very safe. And so one of the thoughts was to have this like. Multi-use friendly road. So not really changing it, but just designated it as a road that a place for people to walk. And cross. And then we sort of more formalize that crossing. And so, you know, I just wanted to sort of see like, I always want us to think again. This is hopefully a forty, fifty year change or work. And we just want to make sure we think about all of those future things. Okay.
Can I just mention something really quickly? Because when you're going down that road on the east side on center. There's really no sidewalk at all. And then you have no sidewalks, church, Parkinson, right? And so that getting to the sidewalk on the west side is a bit of an anchor. And that's when you're hitting the most tra- traffic. So in some ways, you're kind of like out in the breeze as far as having any sort of defined space to be in. So I really like the idea of that being more demarcated because the surrounding areas don't really have it at all.
Yes, they are just really narrow. And I don't think it was ever, I think it's always interesting to look at the evolution of a city because, you know, like. That was kind of industrial-ish, right? Like there was the mill and there was where the co-op was, was the creamery or the way plant. Like, so it wasn't really like.
It was a railroad.
District, right?
Railroad came in there.
Pardon?
A railroad.
Right, yeah, correct. So you can understand like when they platted the roads, they didn't plat them with the intention of, oh, we need sidewalk here in the future. They just, you know, did what was there. So, um, okay. So I just wanted you to understand like why we put it forward. And um, I put together some options based on the conversations we had. These are not the only thing that can happen. So like if you like one part of it and you want something else changed, don't feel like option one, two or three. Is set in stone is the only way to do it. So like, let me just escape out of here because the PowerPoint just ruins my quality of image. Okay, so here were the three things that we looked at. I'll zoom in a second here. I always make the mistake of looking at the screen up here. Okay, so this is how it was designed, with the exception that um. We have the road width look at as says to be twenty nine feet, which obviously. Um, or the, excuse me, not the road width, the travel lanes to be twenty one feet. So this one has made an assumption that the. West side parking is not going to be there. Again, it's still an option, right? And then also notable is that those parking stalls are not going to be parking stalls that are like delineated. It's just our way of trying to figure out like a, a quick count of like, how many people could park here? So that's why it's not elsewhere on the drawing. It's just, we just, we're using it as markers as a way for you to kind of judge distance. So this would be what again is presently out there. Um, there's a lot of different colors here. So obviously like the blue. Is concrete that is laid out as a driveway, right? So meaning like it's coming down and it's meeting the curb. Oh, sorry, like the, the light blue, the turquoise sea blue, sorry. Yes, thank you. So that's what that is, just to help kind of like put your head around it. So uh. This would be like, um, the difference between what's here now is that um. This is currently asphalt. And all this is asphalt, basically. Uh, so it would be actually like a concrete, we, if there was sidewalk to be delineated there, we would want it to be concrete. Because concrete does reinforce a sidewalk area unless you're using it as a multi-use path. And so there would. If we wanted it there, um, I did talk to Sean Murphy Lopez, he's our bike and pedestrian guy. About like, how would you do this? And he's, he said, you know, ideally you would make it more defined that there is like a sidewalk area there. I did ask him, so one of, some of the things that were brought up was, well, originally we were looking, so. My original question was like the use of this, um, these parking stalls. I think it seems pretty unanimous that people want to keep them there. Um, we were looking at doing it differently because again, these are conflict points where people are coming out. Um, I think. Every road is, your experience is how you use it. And so my experience is I don't necessarily. Use that area to get to Nelson's, like I kind of pull in, but I use it go further north to get to the co-op a lot or Walgreens a lot. And so I often like run into people like pulling out and backing out from their stalls and then like other people pulling in. It's like trying to simplify things. Um, if that was the case, it would be different. And we would just have a sidewalk that's going through and a curb. But then obviously you wouldn't have the same amount of parking. People could load their carts from the side, but they wouldn't necessarily be able to be behind their vehicle to do it. Um, and so right now we're presenting it as a driveway because that just seemed like the direction that everybody wanted to go. Um, and so then I talked to him a little bit about like, is there a concern about having people backing out? Onto where the sidewalk is, especially since if you look like. These parking stalls are also in the right of way. And so it does like make the area for us to put the sidewalk a little smaller. His opinion was like having a sidewalk. In general is better and safer for people to, to use. And he, he was not concerned about that. Another thing that we brought up was um.
Who's he again? Pardon me, who's he again?
Yeah, he was the guy that did the bike and pedestrian.
Okay, we're still talking with him, okay.
Um, and again, I mean, people's opinions can be however they want, but I just wanted to give you like a subject matter expert because I always try to. Do sort of like a pressure test, you know, like. Am I where an industry person who specializes in, is that what, how they're thinking or am I, you know, should there be concern? Because I'm a jack of all trades, right? I try to like regurgitate what I learn from people and use like my knowledge in these areas. Um, but he seemed to feel like it was not concerning him that it would want him to not have a sidewalk there. And then the other area um is like looking right next to the loading dock. There's. Only four feet in total there. So the sidewalk is, if it was there, would not be a full width sidewalk. It would be a narrowed sidewalk. Um, some of the concerns that were brought up was that like, you know, it's kind of like a pinch point. I think a curb makes it safer. But, you know, again, uh, I know there's some debate about how much people use that. I, when I drove by this morning, somebody was walking there. It was a, it was a employee, but it was someone walking there. And then again, if we're looking at crossing ever, I would say we need somewhere for people to get to to use it. But we've also not been super excited when I say we staff. About a mid-area or this area having a crosswalk. So I mean, that wasn't necessarily going to happen. I just sort of like throw out all the options, right?
Sarah?
Yeah.
What's our accident history in that area?
There's not a lot of accidents here.
That's what I kind of thought.
Yeah. And I always, I go back and forth about that because it's like accidents certainly indicate like how much trouble we've had. I would say that like the road is seemingly getting busier all the time. Um. And then I also get the exact opposite all the time. People say. Something is unsafe. Are we waiting for something to happen before somebody does something? So you know, it's kind of, I don't know. You're, again, use your judgment. Um, so this is the one of how we have it now. So the next slide. Ish, wherever it is. The next slide is like really not wanting people to use the space for walking and really like making that as the. Idea. Um, so this is asphalt. This is like it is now. Asphalt also against the building because there's just really, it's still is traversed. Um, but also because putting grass in there would be really challenging. And then this further block having some green space because there, if we, this. Scenario has a full curb in it. So all of this is assuming a full curb on the side still. And so it wouldn't be usable. If there was a full curb head. So green space. Um, very similar to what's out there now, except for the fact that there's a full curb and this currently is asphalt right now. Like all of this is just open except for this last little section. Here is oh, uh, is curb head, full curb head. And this um is like a sidewalk ramp. But that it just doesn't go to anywhere. Um, and then the other option. Is uh assuming like an amountable curb. And again, I wanted to make sure like we were clear that that would mean that there still is like. A rise, a raised area. Um, but looking almost exactly like it is now, besides that. Um, with asphalt in all of the locations. So one could do the same thing and say they want it to not be a mountable curb and have a um. Straight through like basically a gutter, but I, I would say that would probably be. The least helpful option for all of the things we've talked about. Uh, and then, sorry, go ahead.
I had a question just about the difference between um a gutter curb and a mountable one, which is. If people are backing into the road into center, like this isn't, it was the same question I had when I talked to Jacob today, which is like how many. Accidents actually like close calls are happening here, but as part of that mountable curb, if they're going back into the road, also going to sort of. Clue in that they're like entering the roadway now because it's, it's a bit blind.
I think so. I think like if you, this is uh that example before of like the curb types. And I would say that it truly. Is more like this right now, rather than a mountable curb. Like, because a mountable curb, again, it's like got four inches of elevation. And so you guys choose how you'd like it to be, but I just. Uh, the concept of mountable curb, I've been throwing out a lot. I just want to make sure everybody's talking about the same thing. So yeah, I'm happy to answer questions, but I just wanted to like. Put this out there so that you understood like how we got here. And that I truly feel like this is a political choice about like how, who's, where your concessions lie. Because I can't put everything in that's, that's everyone wants, right? Like there's definitely like concessions. You, that need to be made in order to achieve a road design here. So yeah. Happy to go to whatever slide that you'd like to, to help.
Sarah, can you go to? Uh, what was it? Option B, I guess?
Option B was um.
Yes, this one.
Yeah.
So it's a, a full gutter the whole way down?
Yeah.
Does it have to be?
Um, well, right, exactly. You certainly have options. I mean, this could be. In any which way, I would say you wouldn't want a green space next to no curb at all because you, yeah.
But I was like, so up here you could have a mountable curb and then down here you could have a full gur- full curb.
You could do that, absolutely. Yeah. And for the most part, like.
Is this, sorry, is this the space? It's a, there, there's a shed right there, you're like, and then currently it's got a big slope on it. Okay. Is, are the power lines on the west side of the street, are they going to be buried?
No.
So there's going to be poles and, poles in the middle of the multi-use?
No, no, they're being moved two feet over. They'll be in.
Towards the road?
Pardon? Yeah, they'll be in this like gra- well, sometimes it'll be grass, sometimes it'll be paved like so. This looks a little different than the last time you saw it because I was able to talk. Um, this looks a little different than the last time you saw it because I was able to talk to Vestbok about their driveways. Uh, and we're still talking, but this was from what I worked out with them. One conversation we could have about how it would look, like they have such tiny little spots that you wouldn't put grass there like. And the poles will be here. So the pole is currently here, but the pole will be moved over into this area.
And then which side of the street has no parking?
So currently there's no restriction on parking on this bo- block at all, or the block north of it. And then the food co-op actually asked for no parking on the west side. So there's no parking on the west side up there for congestion. Um, right now they're talking about no parking on this side. And if you look, there's, so I know that you guys have talked about like closing one of the driveways. So this driveway, I think is the one that you're talking about.
Yes.
Um. So there'd be more potential for parking there. Um, but generally there's not a lot of spots right now.
Sure.
Does anybody have questions of what Sarah has, Sarah's went through a lot and it's great information. I think it helps everybody understand. Once everybody's done with that, if it's all right, I'll go through and talk about what. I've taught, you know, what my understanding of things are and what people have said they would like versus what they wouldn't like. Cause I think it aligns with some of the, she's done a great job of giving these different options. I just want to go through that and then I know everybody else has had some ideas too. So I think we gotta hear that. So questions for.
I wanted to ask, uh, option three, is that curb all the way down also then?
On the east side?
Option three on east side.
Mountable.
Yeah, because you would want anything.
All the way down is mountable?
Well, in this version it is, but please know that like, there's three A and three B. Like we can be creative about how you want to see it. This is just trying to help people think about what the options.
This is closest to what's there now, isn't it?
Right.
Correct, yeah.
Except for it's got one, two, three, four, five parking spots marked out.
Yeah, and they won't be, we will not be marking those parking stalls. That was just, uh, a way we could count to sort of just like kind of see how much parking there is. I should probably just get it deleted. So there, there's no intention to mark those as parking stalls.
Cause up above it says adding five on-street parking stalls, keeping existing on-street.
Right.
So that's what needs that word, that verbiage needs to be taken off too. Adding five on-street parking stalls, keeping.
Well, so it kind of, so. I guess it depends how you look at it. So if there's any kind of curb there, there would be like those on-street parking stalls. Versus sort of like the undefined, it could be deleted. A bit of a. It could go either way. Yeah.
Other questions?
I guess I'm personally beginning to wonder if this is the best option for a bicycle and pedestrian. Path. Um, nothing against any of them, but this is a highly commercialized area. And I would think you'd almost want to discourage. No? Because I mean, there's more and more traffic using these streets.
No, this is my neighbor. This is like people are walking and biking.
This is, this is the best option?
Well, it is, it is already used as a bicycle. My kids, I ride on, on center and on that sidewalk.
Yeah, it's a made thoroughfare for people.
Okay, I guess I don't see a lot of that, but, um, I know just talking to a lot of people that are using. Side streets to get back and forth, north to south in town. And I just thought with this street possibly getting busier and busier, is that actually the best option for a, a bicycle? That's my thought. I just, I don't know.
It completes like the downtown corridor and connects to other, yeah, the co-op mainly. Like it's a highly used. Um, so once you go to the co-op and you head uptown.
Yeah.
And it's just the natural progression. Like I don't think there should be a sidewalk on the other side, right? So it's like, yeah, there's already a sidewalk there.
Right, yeah.
So all those, all they're saying is they're, but widened by two feet or?
Three.
Three feet?
Yeah, it's the, the unfortunate thing about it is that it should be wider to really be a multi-use path, but it's kind of what we got.
I just was wondering if it was going to be the safest option, you know?
I, I, with, with. It's already, I guess it already is a pedestrian path. That's why.
Right. Yep.
How's it going to be less safe?
Well, I mean, there's more and more traffic being diverted from main street onto the side street, it seems like from what I've.
No, but it's on a sidewalk.
Right, yeah. No, I know, but I mean, I think that there's got to be a lot of focus on parking and, and commercial trafficker. Traffic in general, vehicle traffic and parking. We need to make sure that's.
I do agree, Todd, with your idea that people are trying to utilize side streets more than the congested main street. But the fact that North Center doesn't go all the way through, I don't know that that necessarily. Becomes the ultimate option for that traffic, but. And would have to.
Yeah, I guess I'm just saying it's such a commercialized few blocks that we just, I think need to have the mo- most. Parking and, and, um.
I think if you took that sidewalk away, we'd have a really busy, I think you'd have a lot of people in this room, really.
I'm not saying take it away.
Yeah, but I.
But I think we need parking on that side too. I think we need the most parking that we can possibly have.
I mean, I would really suggest going and standing out there for a couple hours on a Saturday and just see what it's like.
Yeah.
I mean. I don't, I don't know. I just, I. It's, this is people's neighborhood. It is a commercial area, but people are up and down on that all the time.
But I mean, to take away the parking on that side too, it just doesn't seem, doesn't seem.
I think.
Like the right thing to do.
Public Works Committee decided to go that route after we heard Chad talk about needing the room for the fire trucks and emergency vehicles.
The parking to get rid of the west side.
To allow enough room for emergency vehicles. And all the other big trucks and some stuff that come down through there.
I have a question for Sarah. You've talked about the width of that path being eight feet, which is the minimum, but it's that width, the whole duration of the path. It's not just because of this area that it's being narrowed. The entire path, multiple blocks is eight feet wide.
Because in those areas, there's sidewalk on the other side of the street.
Sure, I, and I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't, because I hadn't, we hadn't talked about that. So I wasn't sure if we were narrowing it up there. But we're not, it's that width all the way through. So I think to, it's probably worth talking about what, you know, everybody in the area has agreed makes sense. And I think that multi-use path, I've talked with Jacob and Garrett, I've talked with Todd Vestbach. And I know Sarah has too, and I don't think anybody's having any concern with that multi-use path on that side. And putting that full curb on that side. Um, the other day, Sarah and Nate and I had met and Jacob had sent me an, an image that day about getting rid of one of those entrances. Which could potentially could put more parking on that. But I think that's further down the road kind of that we've talked about. That potential, I mean, it, all that doesn't have to be decided right now. And I think as this gets built out, you know, Vestbox opening needed to be wider. They talked with Sarah and explained that. So I think. How did you explain that to me the other day? Like the curb cuts for the entrances and all of that is never something that really gets. Hard. We want to see how that plays out, but I think, is it, am I right in that?
Yeah, uh.
Yeah, that's, that, that might have been, um, yeah. We usually obviously show approximate, as you see here, driveway openings on, on a plan. But, um, we really after the, the road is getting built and the, you know, the gravel's down. We usually walk the project and truly, you know, go driveway to driveway and mark the openings with a laugh to make sure. You know, we got the right width and a lot of times that will include meeting with the property owner if there's concerns. So that's correct.
Thank you. So I think, you know, I think the biggest area of concern that we've all heard about. And, and that Jacob really focused on in his thing is the other side of the road, right? So the multi-use path, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no, and Jacob's here, so I'm going to rely on him a little bit every once in a while here. Yeah, we, the multi-use path on that side at eight feet wide perfectly fits.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So on the east side, and this is the, yeah. Got to love when kids give you props for your names. Um, so the east side, which is this side here. This particular drawing shows. Essentially what Jacob and his team would like to see, right? It has that mountable curb all the way down through. Gives us opportunities for people to pull up, you know, a lot of big trucks and trailers park on this side of the road. And that, you know, you talk about on a Saturday, that's what I see that many, many times throughout the week is a lot of big trucks parked on this side of the road. Which is frankly better because now they're not encroaching on the sidewalk on the other. Cause right now trucks can pull up on there, kind of get on the sidewalk, kind of choke it down. And I think having some delineation on that side is really important. So this particular one is what the property owners, which are the Eggers, you know, Nelson Egger Center side. Prefer, is that?
Yes, that's correct. Yep, yep.
So the questions that come in then are to Sarah's point about, you know, different types of curb further down. And, and that sort of thing. So I just. I, go ahead.
Well, is the. This portion here. Is that, is that grade going to change or is it going to? Like, are people going to be able to park there? Cause right now they can't really. You know?
The grade at the building really can't change that now if you do add a multiple curb, you know, they have that four inches. So theoretically that slope will get a little better than it was, but especially right at the north edge of the existing building. If you drive there, that's the steepest part. Um, and then when you get after that, it flattens out again. Um, so a mountable curb will theoretically flatten it out a little bit, but it'll still be steep. Um, it'll still be relatively steep in there. It'll kind of function as it was.
Steve, we, we would prefer that be, uh, asphalt for overflow parking. You know, a lot of times there are large trucks and trailers that will sometimes park, park down there as well. If there's not spots closer to the building, as well as, uh, snow concerns, uh, when we have snow, um, come off the building. We need to be able to remove it, uh, away from the building because we've had a history of that melting snow back flowing into the building. So we would prefer that be asphalt versus grass.
And I think part of the frustration from the cities, it's frustration of mine, I know it's a frustration of other city staff is. At some point, city officials allowed this development to get out into the right of way, which is kind of. Essentially at that point agreed to let it be what it was. And now they've built their infrastructure out there and it, so that's part of the challenge of the frustrating part, right? Like I, I'm frustrated that as a city, we put ourselves in a position to have to. Be unhappy with something that's happening when in reality, we're the ones that essentially allowed it in the first place. So.
I'm not unhappy.
Well, but you know, to Sarah's point, there's, there's norms, right? And engineering and Matt, you know, has, was in a meeting with Sarah and I left him out. And you know, there's engineering norms, but this doesn't fall into them on this side of the street. So whether or not there's parking on the other street, other side. If they abandon one of those driveways, there is potential for some parking there. And I think that would be of interest to the Egger Center.
Yeah, that, that would definitely be of interest. And if the sidewalk does not go in like proposed on, on number three here. Um, again, we were talking about the, the parking on the east side of the, the road would be able to pull up closer to our building, essentially up to four feet closer. Um, which would leave the road, uh, travel path in the middle, if you will, wider. And in our opinion, potentially allow parking on the, on the west side. Is that accurate in terms of width, Sarah?
Well, I just, I want to caution, I mean, I, so. I didn't intend to restrict parking on that side of the road from the beginning. Um, at least in the beginning of, and then seeing how it went. Um, but I will say if you allow parking on that side, we're back to the narrower road we've been talking about. We gain, I would say probably about two foot of usable space. So it's two foot gain, but that only gives us. Uh, sorry, Matt, is it, we were at, uh, twenty-one, so it would be twenty-three. So you're, you're parking there, I think like some of Chad's concerns are brought up again. I don't know that we're really like, and which is fine. I'm, I am more than willing to experiment with it and support it. But I don't know that, that's what I've heard from the concerns from before. Just want to make sure people do know what that means.
This is just a question about the size of vehicles that go through here. So like adding parking space. Yeah, just when we're looking at the recommended width of the road, is that for regular traffic? Or is that for in semis that are turning? That's what I'm just like looking at this. I'm like, okay, you know, where the, the side stalls are, those are going to be more like trucks, cars. They're not going to be as big, they can pull in and out pretty easily. So I don't know if it makes a difference of where the parking is on the west side. Depending on what the kind of traffic and kind of vehicles. I don't know. It's the question I have.
And I think that's something we talked about. So. Having track, you know, you, having parking that would essentially start back here would allow for turning radiuses, things to be what they need to be. Right? If you push traffic, parking all the way up, which you'd block Vestbox driveway, which you can't do that. So as long as it doesn't start till back here, where the third little blue. I, their opening is. That allows traffic to make those turns and navigate those. But again, I think to Sarah's point, like not saying no and open to seeing kind of how it all works out is. A good position to be in. I think Jacob agrees with that, like. And that was even talked about in the last meeting where we're not, we're not necessarily painting parking stalls. We're just going to kind of see how things shake out. And then if something becomes a hazard, we'll all work together to identify, hey, that's a hazard. Like we, we need to abandon that one spot. Or we need to move this or that or the other thing and that. I think is, is what. The direction that was hoped to have been gone.
Yep, spot on. Yep.
So. So questions? There's an awful lot of questions at the last meeting and, and I know that was a committee meeting. So any members of the council that weren't here for that. Nate?
Yeah, so just a couple of points of clarification, make sure I got it correct. Um, it was conversation that we had on the west side of the street, basically in front of Vestbox property, that that was going to be restricted.
Yeah.
No parking, no matter what. I don't think that will be a sort of a wait and see thing, simply because of its adjacency to Decker. And the fact that there really is no parking there because of the, right here. Correct.
Yeah. And that makes.
Right.
Sense to.
And again, the motion that came out of Public Works is that there was no parking on this portion of, of the west side of the street. However, I think what I hear Jacob saying is the sort of compelling argument over having multiple curb here. Is if there's an opportunity for trucks to get over, granted you're buying a couple of feet. It does give a better chance for parking on the west side of the street to not be a problem to the degree that we would have to. Get rid of that in order to facilitate fire truck deployment, right? Is that, is that all fair? Is that, is that what we're, okay. Thank you. That's, I think those are my two pieces of.
Go ahead.
Um, this is Seth and I make a motion that we move forward with option three or C of. North Center have. Street adjustment.
Cindy, I second.
I've got a motion a second. Jacob, do you have something? If you do, make sure you turn on your. This, his motion is to approve this. Plan with an understanding, is it true that those curb cuts and things will be worked on with the team as they move forward? If, if Jacob decides to abandon and exit, then they'll put a curb there, then that may change. So I just don't want you to think if you drive out there and see one less driveway.
I would like to see that be a mountable curb all the way around the east side.
And can we go back? I'm sorry, can you go back to that? The mountable curb. Right, so, yep. So can you guess?
Up, I mean, if you want me to clean that up.
I don't think so, would.
I basically had.
Nope.
Sorry, without the options being designated anything, this being the third one we saw being that option. And then with mountable curb on the east side.
I had to move forward with option three as presented with mountable curb on the east side.
But I think we need to move further north and discuss that next block up. Cause that where it's, the lot is now. Because that's not going to be multiple curb down there. That's going to be the next block down. Yeah, to the north. Yeah, right. I'm talking about go north one block on center. Right.
Oh, sorry. Um, the project ends at Parkinson's.
Ah, okay. Well, we were just talking about that.
Sidewalk, yeah.
The sidewalks. I just want to make sure everybody knows.
Yeah.
That'll be a full curb with a potential sidewalk at some day or at some point.
We actually talked about possibly adding it to this project just because once you have those guys out there, they're cheaper.
Right.
Than um doing it. But yeah, well, we can talk about that.
It would intersect with the next block down then.
Sure.
So it, because.
And we can make sure to put like a crosswalk here.
Crosswalk there.
Yeah.
So sorry to muddy the waters there, but I just didn't want something to come up later in regards to that and have us all think we dealt with that tonight.
Just for clarification, so the multiple curb is all the way to Parkinson?
Correct.
Correct those two blocks. Okay.
Yeah. No, no, just the just in the east side as presented in that. Right. So the east side will be mountable for the two blocks that are the building and your lot, basically. But then that vacant lot.
Yep.
Wasn't going to be multiple curb.
Right. And that that curb is not getting replaced or anything on this project. Correct?
So yeah, the from here up is not, there's nothing happening, but we could potentially add the sidewalk up.
Just one more clarification is the the parking on the west side, is that kind of a wait and see? Cause the motion coming out of Public Works was no parking and.
This motion does not include no parking on that side. And I think to Sarah's point, I think we just allow to see what happens.
That's superseded, you know?
If it works, it works. And if it doesn't, then we'll have to come back and address it.
Yep. Save, save the no parking.
They're fine.
By best box lock.
Yeah, that I don't even think so. The way that it's set up now is only 10 feet. People won't even.
Right.
Shouldn't try it. We'll paint it gold.
And there can't be, right? It's just too small.
Yeah, just.
Can just to clarify too, part of the parking situation too, is because of the one of the driveways first employee. The employee parking would shift, so that might change.
Right. And he sent me a drawing that we did include in here, but essentially instead of having two entrances and exits, there'd be one on this street and then one on Gillette.
Right. And it might open up more parking there than.
I think this one they were looking at eliminating and then having access from the.
So there's still some things we don't know.
Right, right. Any other questions?
I want to clarify it now because of all of this discussion you've had.
Justin was doing. I make a motion that we move forward with option three with mountable curb along the extending the east side.
And you want to add that from Decker to Parkinson or you want to specify that? So now that you've talked about the next block.
Sure. Okay, from Decker to Parkinson.
Okay, that's what I kind of got.
It's not mountable the way at the corner before it's dark blue.
No.
No.
I I think that's probably okay. It would be better if we transition into the intersection with a full curve.
Yeah.
But it is only like fifteen feet now or something.
Which again is what it currently. And that's okay. Yeah.
Yep. You were okay to that as a second?
Yeah. So we're saying that as depicted on the east side base. Okay.
Anybody else have anything? Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
You all. All right, now I get it back to the right screen here. Sorry. Item number 10, discussion with possible action on decorative lights for Center Avenue project.
This is going to be a long night. I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, decorative light. So there are six decorative lights that will be replaced on this construction project. There are um four on Jefferson. Hold on, am I got this backwards? Four on Jefferson and two on Court. Is that correct, Matt?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. Uh, and so we had conversations with people. So um we had people from the Dark Sky Association talk about like, your lights are bad for dark skies essentially. And we've known that they're really challenging. Um, and so originally they came and they looked at, um, they suggested different color temperature. So the the lower the number, the warmer like yellowier it is. Um, and then they also suggested like, what about just changing the fixture type? Cause right now we have these beautiful globes that are, I would say, very, very difficult to control. Light, just one part lights up, but it lights up the whole globe, right? And so we can change temperature, which is great. That's an option. But um, the idea was put forward about like, so inside those globes is like a fixture and the fixture does point down, but again, the globe doesn't really allow it to truly be directed. Whereas these other structures or fixtures are actually have the fixture in the top and only go down. And there's no globes that then makes it light. Um, so we've talked to a few groups and it seems like there was more support than I first thought that we would have. That was part of the reason we did the survey was because I was not sure what people would think. Like, what do you think about us changing the style of this? I mean, it still is a decorative light, but it's not the same style. And um historically, we had lights, you know, once upon a time, nineteen twenties, you can see pictures that show the the bulbs. Then they disappeared. I don't know exactly when, but like sixties and seventies more, we had like the Cobra lights, like we have at the top of the town. And then sometime in the nineties, they went back to the style. And I'm thinking it was just like the resurrection of the historical, right? So just so you sort of understand, and so, you know, obviously there's an intention to have that kind of light. But it seems like we may have found a happy medium with everybody. So we had a hundred and fifty responses and I don't know, you know, we're doing the comprehensive plan. I don't know what kind of numbers you're getting, but that surprised me like a hundred fifty. That was great. Well, that for that whole plan, but like in comparison, anyway, it is pretty good. I was really impressed. Um, thank our student Carson, who got all that stuff together for us. Um, anyway, long story short, I'll just briefly share the results with you essentially. Um, see interns are great. Look at all this fun stuff he did for us. Okay, so there's a hundred and fifty one responses and um we talked and the this is the answer. So the first question was, do you prefer the existing or the proposed? And ninety five percent said, let's try something new. So I would say that's a pretty good indication that people generally feel good about making some changes. Um, and then we went through and threw out like five different styles, because I was just curious to see what people thought. And I can go through them a bit here. I don't want to bog it down. Um, but essentially there was one that was certainly the highest, that was sort of the first one that was put forward. So whatever that means for survey results, but it also is kind of like a pretty standard design. Um, everything kind of ranked about the same, except for the more modern light. People didn't like it, which I thought I threw it in there because I was just so curious to see what people would think. And it was very clear that was the only one that truly had a significantly different rating. Excuse me. Okay, so what does that mean? So this is the Sigma light. This is the one that was put forward. This was the first one on the list and had the highest ranking. Um, then the second runner up, so to speak, was something a little, a little more decorativeness on it. I guess the one thing about this is it kind of has more structure in the middle, although different than our current. And then the kind of runner ups, the color, it was black um on the image, but this is what I was able to pull up quickly. Again, a little bit more flair. Um, this one was about the same as the last one. These were all pretty close. This one would not have the globe in it, but it has that structure that looks more like a globe. And like I said, the one that people were just pretty much, oh, I didn't pull it up. Sorry, it was a more modern looking light. So I don't know if you just want to like go if you feel good about a different kind of fixture without a globe. And if you do feel okay about that, where are you sit? And I can show you all of those again. This was again, the one that had the most votes. So the ones that we have now, darn it, I should have brought, uh, let's see if I can pull it up real quick here.
I think one of the examples had a globe.
Oh, sorry. You're right. It was this one. It's like the, yeah. It's like, it's actually plastic, but it's looks like a glass part. They yellow with time, which changes the light color. So sometimes it's hard for us to match, although we're going that way anyway, so probably not the end of the world. But it also makes the light hard to control.
Question, uh, when they're open, does it create like avenues for like birds to nest in?
I I have not heard of problems people have with them and do remember like the lights turn on and they're, they do heat up. So um now. Yeah, right. Incubation. Um, well, um, so we are in experiments here, right? So like, I actually would say that I'm going to take a, I'm going to take educated guess that we could probably get one with the globe and one without. And we could probably put the globe in later if we decided we liked the globe. So if if that's kind of the um crux of some of the concern or some of the in different thought, I think that's something that's solvable. Uh, it's certainly different to have like a true fixture on the top versus sort of like the ones that are in there now or like a full globe. There's some, some of them have like a cap on top. So.
Second question is cost. Are these considerably more money than?
No.
The old ones or they?
If anything, they're less because they're just less stuff.
Cool.
And I would say the whole, so the dark sky is, you know, looks for more than just having the reason of having a dark sky. And so the idea is that there's electrical cost savings with a different fixture that has a lower intensity light. So you could, one could say that there's more savings than just the capital cost.
So this was the number one choice.
This was the number one choice. This is the one that the consultant originally threw forward. But it also was the first on the list. And so I I kind of wonder about whether people were just like excited at the beginning and then they were like, oh, they asked five different styles and then stopped. Like, I don't know, for take it for what it will be, but this certainly was, it had three point eight eight out of five.
Where's the second one then?
Uh, the second one was this, but these, I would say the next three, this, this one, which would be in black. And this one were all really close in in ranking, like they were, I would say equally appreciated within less than a star, so to speak.
That one reminds me of the blue lights they have on college campuses that you're supposed to go to to be safe.
Oh. Yeah.
I don't, I don't just think that one's kind of.
Well, then we won't land on that one.
I'm not, but I'm now I'm worried about the birds. You got me worried. You got a good question. No, I, I.
I I feel like that's a solvable problem.
Do you?
Yeah, I also, I would think that I brought it up only just because I was curious if there was an answer for it. But I'm assuming they wouldn't sell a lot of these lights if that was a problem. Right?
I don't know. Well, this one, maybe that would be harder. Either that one's harder for the birds to get into, or it provides more structure for their nests.
That's what I think about this one. There's more structure. So you think you get more nests. I like the first one.
So do I.
You too.
Yeah.
I think we have ones that are somewhat similar in uh Sherry Edition, like uh by you. Don't they have a few? There's a few of them.
Well, they're cheaper.
I think when they did the subdivision, they put like a decorative light up. It's one of the few places that has like a different style light.
I'd make a motion that we go with this one for the decorative lights. This one being the Sigma pled.
Yeah.
And that was the first place.
Yeah, that's the first place.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got a motion.
This is Seth. I'd second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right. We'll do a roll call.
Oh, hold on. Steve.
Hi.
Seth.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Mark Kirkie.
Hi.
Emma.
Aye.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Aye.
John.
Hi.
And Crystal.
Aye.
All right. Item number 11, update on the status of the city of Verona landfill.
Oh, okay. Um, let me just see. Hopefully Mike is still in the mix. Okay, he's still in the mix. So Mike, who is our consultant on the landfill project, um, is joining us today. And uh, we're trying to give you an update on where we're at. Let me just change the screen to the agenda here. So Mike, please jump in whenever you'd like. But I guess I can report that we moved forward with the work that we had intended last time, that first phase. Um, we did stop a little short of where we had originally planned. We just, the way the layout of the landfill was, where the road was, it just didn't make sense for us to put in the extra eighty feet. Uh, when we were digging, we originally found hit rock almost right away in the very top part, which did confirm to us why things were like they were. We moved, you know, twenty feet down and then we started getting some material and we could get to the bottom of natural soil. But as we moved on, we stopped being able to reach it. So meant that it's like fifteen feet deeper or deeper was where the natural ground lays. Um, and that just was the extent of where we're, our excavator could work safely. Um, and so it makes sense from what we've seen is that this was like a valley gully area that people started throwing garbage in. And then they decided that this was the landfill. And so, you know, we'd evolve that way. So it's following what uh we expected and it's confirming the things that we just, it's hard to know because what we don't know is a lot. Like, there's not a lot of information prior to the closure. So from the closure on, you know, they, in the closure, they sort of estimated how deep the landfill was. But we don't have like documentation that I have been able to find about like how they filled it, what it looked like before, what the topography was. Um, so after that, so basically we just like made a trench. It has four vents on it. Um, and um, we were getting gas coming out. We weren't getting as high of a level as gas as we were hoping for. So, you know, compared to some of the probes that we had, uh, it wasn't the same level, but we're still getting gas out. Um, we did some sampling around, so we have probes that are outside the landfill and then along the north of the property. We weren't seeing a huge change. It was fluctuating. We've done a lot of testing. That is something that I think is our greatest tool right now is to just keep sampling. Because what we have found is that it isn't necessarily consistent. Uh, there's some fluctuations that are happening, be it weather or atmospheric pressure. It's not just like gases and just streaming out, being produced continuously like that. Like it's ebbs and flows depending on conditions. And so we basically need to understand those conditions a bit better. Um, and so we started experimenting about like what the next step was. And so when the next step from a passive system is to actually like start putting a vacuum on it and pulling. Um, I'll speak for Mike in the sense that I know that he's always been really concerned about like that might work really well for us in the beginning, but that we'd probably have a really expensive piece of equipment that then, once we got most of the gas out, we weren't generating enough to really even keep using it kind of thing. And so like, that's always been a concern. Um, but we thought, why don't we throw a vacuum on it and see what happens? And we've had some interesting results. Um, we're definitely can vacuum. So like the trench is working properly, uh, we're able to pull our air through it. We are seeing again inconsistent data, but we have seen it significantly drop um at times after venting. So now we're just trying to find some consistency in what's happening and try to understand what those factors are. Mike, you want to add to that?
I I think that is a good um explanation of where we're at right now. The one thing I would add is during the process of checking, there's three gas probes next to the vents and we've been checking those um and doing different things like Sarah said. But we also went looked at the four gas probes on the north side. And those gas probes.
Loud as possible. We're having, we can hear you, but not super well.
Okay, is this any better?
A little bit.
Hey, I just closed it up with my mouth. Um, on the north side of the landfill, there are four gas probes and we use those four, or we took samples at those four gas probes originally. And three out of the four had low methane concentrations. But um, what we are finding is that is also variable. And at times, all four of them have significantly high concentrations of methane. So the landfill, depending on um weather, atmospheric conditions, seems to be pushing gas out at times and at other times it is not. So it's kind of a Sarah uses uh her cave analogy from her vacation of the landfill is breathing in and out. And it's just a matter of when we're testing it, what is it doing? So what? it's just a matter of when we're testing it, what is it doing? So what does that tell me? It tells me that we have high quality gas being generated in the landfill. But there, the quantity is not significant. So which goes back to if we install the blower and a active system, it would probably, um, we'd probably get the gas out relatively quick. And if anything, pull oxygen into the landfill, which creates other problems. So um, and those other problems is once you get oxygen in the landfill, then different bugs start decay or breaking down the material and those different bugs that live on oxygen, give off heat, which can result in landfill fires. But we don't want that. So it's, it's a balance. And as Sarah said, we're right now, um, the best thing we can do is continue to monitor based, you know, with what we have and, and tweak it and do different things and just see what happens. Uh, I had a conversation. I think it's a week and a half ago with the DNR and the DNR said, well, now that you got numbers and we submitted a report to the DNR of everything we've done and what we found. And they basically said, well, now that um, you've installed the, the vents and you have findings and there's still gas, we'll probably send, we will send another letter saying you're still not in compliance. It's a check the box letter for the DNR and they're going to ask what are our next steps? And until we get that letter, um, Sarah and I were discussing this afternoon that we just continue to gather information and um, try and figure out as much as we can before we have to tell them what our next step is going to be.
Thank you. So questions? Thoughts?
Is this due to uh, the, the pipe not being along the ground? Or does that matter?
I maybe just hear the first part.
Uh, you said like you, you could go down so far where you hit ground, but then there were places where you could not. If it was on the ground, would that matter?
Well, it would just mean that we know we're getting all the way through the garbage layer. So essentially like what we're putting in is really chunky rock.
Right.
And then wrapping it in fabric so that it can, the gas can move into there and then we can vent it out. And so when we're not getting all the way to the bottom, that means like, one of the things we could see was like a lot of plastic on top of each other. So like the waste decomposed, but the plastic didn't. You know what I mean? So like the more, the deeper we can get into that layer, the more effective it is that we're getting that whatever's in that layer, right? Cause it's kind of stratified.
The, the other thing, um, the pu, so we dug a trench and then backfilled the trench with stone. The pipe is at the top of the stone. So it's not the pipe being, not being deep enough. It's um, or anything like that. Methane um, is lighter than air, so it'll rise. So it should go into the trench, rise and enter the pipe and then go out of the vents. And one of the things Sarah said is that the concentration in the vents isn't as high as the gas probes. But the, the vents are not sealed. Um, they're six inch open pipes. So we are getting some mixing with ambient air, which is diluting the concentration of meth, methane in the vents. So the, the fact that we didn't get all the way down the native soil, um, should, should not be affecting, um, the gas is not, should not be moving down and out. Or even it, the preferential pathway should be to enter the stone and go up.
Thanks again. Any other questions? Do you have anything else there? Otherwise we'll.
No, we just wanted to make sure you knew where we were at with all of it.
Thank you very much. I know this is a tough one. Um, all right, we're going to move on to item. We could take a quick break. We've got a few folks here. So I, well. Can we get through a couple more quick? And there's a couple, sorry. Um, um, item number 12 is discussion of possible action to modify the scope of the Hanson Farm infrastructure and possibly include railroad avenue and authorization to go out for bid.
So given the most recent update, the landfill, we also thought it'd be appropriate to discuss what you want to do about the Hanson Farm development. Around this time when we started uh, the work uh, for the landfill mitigation, we sort of put development on hold. And this is essentially a pulse check to see, is that still what you want to do? Do you want to do, do you want to move forward? Or do you want to do something in between? And so uh, this came from a conversation between myself and Sarah, um, James Hanky, who is with our economic development group that supports the work that we're trying to do here, as well as Matt Mukow, who I believe is still online. And then there was follow-up conversations with the mayor. And so essentially what you have on screen there that Sarah has is the original development, infrastructure development plan, um, phase. Uh, the first phase did not include a full connection to um, to uh, the intersection um, on uh, basically what we'll refer to as the Walmart intersection because essentially we were waiting for the DOT to catch up to us before we make our extension. Um, that project, which includes streets, um, extension of water and sewer up Chicago Avenue, uh, stormwater sidewalk, and then of course, uh, water and sewer mains, um, as shown on the map was estimated to be around 3.875 million dollars. Along with that, we had three to four developers, one of which we'll sort of hear from tonight on their concept plan. Um, that would help their new tax base would help pay for that. As well as the commercial development um, against highway 14. Based on our conversations with Mike, who, who may still be on at this point, uh, was that um, we could move forward with this development. The suggestion was that they, that anybody who's um, adjacent and the word adjacent is I guess vaguely used, um, can install radon mitigation systems, which are systems that are used to mitigate radon, naturally occurring radon in areas of the state. Uh, I think he mentioned Madison in particular, that sees a lot of uh, that type of bedrock. I, I think it's shale and slate that produces it most frequently. Um, and that would, similar in, in terms of mitigating radon, mitigate methane if there was some residual in that area. Um, so I think from Mike's perspective, we could move forward with development and feel fairly comfortable in doing so. Um, at the same time, um, the developers and ourselves, we are ultimately accountable for doing whatever it takes to make sure that our landfill is in compliance, which means that it's not off gassing methane uh, to neighboring properties above what the legal limit is, which is like half a percent, I believe. Is that right? I'm looking at Sarah.
The legal limit is 1.25.
Okay.
25% of the LE.
Okay, perfect. Um, so ultimately we're responsible for that and we're committed to doing that no matter what happens with the development. And so uh, what we what we could do is, is this, we could choose to move forward with this and engage the developers who have come to the table and said, are you okay proceeding? I haven't had that conversation with them yet. I want to see what, where the council is at that, but we could ask them, are you ready to proceed? There's still risk there. Um, most notably our multifamily uh, developer is a little bit further behind than the other ones because they're sort of the newest one of the group. And so they're still working on developing their project, which you'll see tonight. Um, so the full tax base won't be committed to the project in the same time that we have to commit to a contract. Okay? And so the, the risk there is about two and a half million dollars, right? If we move forward and only about half the developers build in the timeline we build, the city won't have, we'll be short about two and a half million dollars of tax increment in order to cover the bills long-term, the debt service long-term. The other option is that the project just gets delayed. Okay? The problem with it getting delayed is that right now is a good time to do grading. Um, in the fall, it's drier and it's a lot easier to push around dirt and get proper soil compaction, all those other stuff. Matt, jump in if I'm using wrong terminology. Um, but it's a lot easier in the fall. If we miss this window, trying to do it in the spring, it becomes a little bit more of a sloppier mess. And so then we may feel compelled to shoot for summer. And so there was some thoughts about like, well, what if we get something started, right? If we don't want to wait to execute the full project and move forward next year, what if we did like a halfway point? Like we start some stuff this year. We don't do the full shebang and infrastructure and we just kind of get things rolling. So Sarah, I don't know if you want to pull on the up that alternative.
Too many different.
Nope, that's it. So this one would only um, implement um, road A uh, up to the point where it terminates because we're waiting for the DOT to catch up in what is it? 20, late 26, early 27, probably 27. Um, grading as well as the stormwater, that regional stormwater pond. And the thought process behind this is if we focus on grading, which would be really beneficial if we got to it now. Road A, which regardless of whether the development happens, which I, I, I'm very optimistic that it will, but let's say worst, worst case scenario, it never happens. Road A would be of a benefit to the city no matter what, because it provides an additional connection point from Chicago to Main Street that is very much absent minus Airport Road and Broadway, right? So there's nothing providing a little bit of a thoroughfare there. And then the regional stormwater pond will support greatly the amount of stormwater runoff that is coming from the commercial parts of the community. I think specifically Walmart, Food Enterprise Center, Sleepy Hollow Chevy Store and, and places like that. And slowing that water down and giving it a place to sit before it continues further south, um, again, would be an overall benefit to the city. Obviously there, you're moving forward and perhaps some of the homes on road A could develop, but without the additional infrastructure, a lot of the homes south of there could not because they don't have road access. So you're limiting your development potential by only doing this portion of infrastructure. Okay. Now the, the, the shortfall there is actually much higher. You're talking about 2.9 million because you have very little tax base, if nothing, to support the infrastructure development. But again, the thought process there is, is that 2.9 million is thinking of it as a capital improvement project to benefit the city overall. Okay?
Um, Matt, I just want to make sure uh, when we were talking today, we thought that there may actually be able to be work done. They wouldn't have a proper road on the ones that don't have a true road, but the grading would be done in a way that access to those properties. I think that's what we had.
Yes, the grading, yeah, there, there wouldn't be road or utilities built, but the grading would be done so that, I mean, the lots would be buildable lots, you know, like set up basically ready to go and uh, it would obviously be flat and the, the roads would essentially be graded just without officially building the road. So the overall grading would basically be done to accommodate, you know, when road B, C and D ever wanted to go in.
Um, so, so essentially those are your three options. I, I want to leave it at that for just a second to allow you all to ask any questions or sort of, it's a lot of information right at once, but that's sort of where we're at right now is um, it's just to get a, get a pulse check on, on where you would like to go at this time. And if it's continuing to stand pat, wait for developers to come through um, and have the landfill a little bit more resolved and then execute everything together at the same time is one option. Moving forward now and whatever, whoever developers may be ready to go right now, taking them with you and getting them signed. Or doing something a little, and what's on screen here is doing something a little in between with, okay, let's do some, start some of the infrastructure so that we can at least keep the ball moving and not lose time and um, and then still plan on um, doing a phase two perhaps next year in the spring. I think it's generally what we had talked about, Matt.
That's correct. Yep. Yep.
So Sarah, Matt, Mayor, um, James isn't here, so he doesn't get to say anything, but uh, is there anything within that? I tried to encapsulate that in the most logical way I could think of, but is there anything I missed?
No, you did a good job and you la, like, like you said, I mean, there's a ton of water that goes through here. So obviously picture that in the spring. If next spring is anything like this one, that'll make grading a pretty big challenge and a mess. Um, so there's definitely a benefit there. The other benefit a little bit that maybe you didn't touch on is whenever the landfill is settled, you're just that much closer. You know, you, once you, you can turn the key over much quicker. A lot less work has to be done between working out an agreement with the other developers and having them ready to build.
Is there any concern about losing some of the developers?
I think the response from the majority of the developers has been very positive and in understanding that the landfill is a pre-existing condition that they've been aware of since they've submitted their project and that the city is committed to taking care of it. I think the bigger concern isn't from their reaction to where we're at now. It's, it's market factors changing that may make projects less doable, you know, a, a number of factors, interest rates, materials, cost, other opportunities that may catch their eye that they divert attention to. It's an ecosystem. So certainly things change.
I'll just share my position, Nate and I talked about. I think my position is based around that question. I think at this point to Nate's earlier point, committed to resolving the issue with the landfill. And if the developers are comfortable knowing where we're at with that, allowing that to move forward sooner rather than later, I think is desirable for the reasons that Nate just mentioned.
So you're talking which option?
I think it was the middle one. He not kind of just moving forward. Not this one.
Right. If we, if we can get serious commitment.
I'll tell you.
It's serious commitment from two out of the three developers. So Greg, me, Vic Meyer, um, you know, Sonya, if she's ready and willing still to go. Joe, who's here in the audience today, he's interested in the multifamily. Again, he's a little bit farther behind because he got a later start than everybody. Um, and we'll talk about switch over and developers and, and reasons for that. But if we get a critical mass of people who are ready to go, I'll bring this, you know, I'll basically say, okay, we have development agreements. Matt and Sarah have timelines where they can bid out the project and still get rolling this year and um, we can, we can try to get things executed. I would say within September, early October uh, timeframe uh, to where we feel really solid. That, that is sort of the option two that I presented is is let's get rolling and try to get as many people signed on to this where we feel comfortable taking the plunge on the contract. Because once we bid this, we'll ha, we'll still have the opportunity to say, yep, yes, no, maybe. Obviously we don't want to bid stuff unless we're fairly certain. We don't, I should say that we don't want to receive the bids until we're fairly certain that we're going, we're in a position to accept.
So option two is what I was talking.
How long until we think the landfills can be more resolved?
If I had a crystal ball, that's kind of, I mean, uh, obviously we're working towards it as quickly and thoroughly as we can, but I don't know. Mike, if you feel comfortable giving any set number or timeframe?
Uh, the DNR is going to be pushing that there's something resolved probably by the end of this year.
I would just think if developers are on board with moving forward, we need to keep everything on track.
Sarah, pardon me.
No, go ahead. I was just going to ask Nate a question.
Um, the landfill thing, is it possible that it could be something that would make it not possible to do this? Something that would happen in the landfill that they would discover or the DNR or not the DNR, whoever it is, it's doing, is it DNR?
It's the DNR.
Would decide, nope, you can't have any housing within or anything within so many feet or I mean, is that the worst case scenario?
Mike's unmuted. I think he's the best to answer that question.
I do not think there. I do not think there's anything the DNR is gonna say that would stop the project. They're, they're gonna require that at the property line, that gas is not leaving the property. At a concentration greater than 5% of the LEL, 1.25%. So that, that's what they're gonna stick to. And then what goes on on the property adjacent. That is, you know, they won't be, that's not in their um, authority.
Okay, thank you.
I think part of the reason there was delay is that it was such a new rapidly evolving item for us. Where Sarah, within the course of two to three weeks, was really trying, among all the other things she was working on. Was really trying to wrap her arms around it to understand. And because of that, it was like, okay, let's just take a beat here. This is a, a newly developed fairly large situation. And I think over the course of the last two, three months, we've had several conversations and. You know, as Mike just reiterated, it was like, okay, guys. For a preponderance of caution paused on this. But since, you know, the, the facts are, we're responsible for taking care of this and we will take care of it, and the DNR will require us to take care of it. At this point, it's like, let's talk to the developers, see if they're ready to move forward, you know, where we're at and with that understanding. And we can proceed with confidence. So uh, it's ultimately your call. There is always a degree of risk. My, my job is to mitigate risk, especially financially. And it's always been my contention that if we're going to take on this amount of infrastructure. We want the necessary revenue to pay for it locked in, okay? And I think we'll get close, but given the delays and just where some of the, especially the larger, the largest developer is at. I'm not sure we can get everything locked in um, on the same timeline that we have to execute a construction contract. So that still is to be resolved night after, with a later meeting will kind of help set the tone for timing. But um, I think it's very possible that we can, we can move forward and have this be a big success. But there's greater risk than I would ideally like. But again, ideally, the landfill would have never became a problem, right? And nobody can help that, right? Except maybe our grandfathers and grandparents and things like that.
Can you just, you just mentioned something back about the venting and radon that just got went over really quickly. Can you just restate that so I catch it?
Yeah, Mike, do you want to take that? Cause that's been one of his recommendations.
So I, I use the term radon system because more people are familiar with um, that. Than just if I say a gas extraction or gas venting system. Basically what it is, is uh, in the, below the subgrade of the building. In the stone, they'll put in pipes. Those pipes will be connected to a small blower, which will vent above the roofline. And that is used for um, households, businesses to deal with. Um, radon currently, but also if there is um. Vapors, other vapors, um, whether from an industrial site, a landfill, whatever. To take those vapors out of the ground and vent them above the structure. So that they don't go into the building. You're basically um, creating a. A system that's going to vacuum up anything that would go into the stone before it goes into the um, through the. Base of the structure, the slab, sorry, I was trying to struggling for the word slab, slab of the structure.
That answer your question?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's, it's a very common system. It's um. Been used, in use for a long time.
I was just curious because you're not meant to use this map, but this area is a really high rate on area. So I was just kind of curious in the state.
Right.
Higher than Dane County, so.
Crystal.
I'm wondering if we are assured that moving dirt around grading and stuff is not going to impact negatively the landfill situation.
We had a call, um, the city and Matt, and we, we talked about certain things. Um, utilities adjacent to the landfill. And there's ways to mitigate those utility corridors from being a conduit of landfill gas. But at this time, there's no reason to believe um, doing anything out there is gonna make the problem worse.
Thank you.
As long as we mitigate any potential conduits uh, from uh, storm sewer water lines. Those type of things. And actually constructing the pond, the pond has got a two-foot clay liner requirement. So that will, um, and what we talked about is if we run into a sand seam adjacent to the landfill. That we um, cut that sand seam out and we backfill it with um, uh, compacted clay. Which would also, you know, help to mitigate any migration that could occur in the future. So some things that are part of the development actually may help the situation at the landfill.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Chris?
Yep.
All right.
My, sorry, I was. My question is, do we have a timeframe on essentially the window with Felton's gift? Essentially like.
Twenty twenty eight money has to be returned.
Right. So the longer we wait to start finding tax return, the more that could be affected.
Oh, yes, absolutely. You know, and. Trying to think how to say, twenty twenty eight, I don't want anybody to feel as if like, hey, everything needs to get in by then. Overall, the way I would look at it outside of, of the purchase of that commercial property is that. The TID, TID seven only has a limited lifespan. It has until twenty forty to generate revenue. And the long, and the sooner we get tax base in there, the more years we have to pay back loans and other costs associated with it. So if we start losing, we lose a year, we essentially could lose, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, maybe hundreds of thousand dollars in tax increment. That can help pay the loan. So that's what we're talking about. It's not so much the Felton property. It's, it's not losing a year of TID revenue.
So I was just gonna ask, you're looking for a recommendation basically from the council to go forward with one of the three options that you gave. Can you?
So i, and I want to just be clear, it's not necessarily about, hey, we are going to move forward with this and. Contracts will be signed. It's more of a fact of pulse check, general direction. We need to think about moving into so that when we show back up here in a next, you know, next week. We're gonna cause the bid for the work needs to be um, to find a new date. And so Matt needs to be aware of that so he can facilitate a new date um, and things like that. And then I can start having conversation with developers saying, hey, the city's ready to go. Are you ready to go? And then depending on how that goes, I'll be back here again at future council meetings to have the next step discussion.
Number two would allow you to do that or be or how I.
Right.
We have three options and not really.
One is we don't move forward at all.
Right.
Just wait and see.
Two is we stay on course.
Nope. Well, two is we start back down the course.
Right. We get back on that course. Three would be we move forward with a reduced model.
So other questions? If not, I think we can.
I'd make the recommendation or the motion that we move forward with option two, where we move forward.
This is Seth. I'd second their motion.
Get a motion and second. Any other questions? Not, we're gonna have to roll, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Go ahead.
Um, I wanted to get that motion on the way because there's one other motion I would like to make with relation to that. On the, on Railroad Avenue, there's a project that would like to move forward. Okay, we're gonna talk about an MOU tonight. That project, um, do you have a railroad avenue while I'm talking? That project over there does not necessitate any new streets or water or sewer. But what it would like to see is stormwater, regional stormwater. So out there on Railroad Avenue, Beerbecker has been working with us over the course of the year about dividing out plan. To uh, extract the highest and best use of that property. Due to the topography, it'd be really helpful on that property to have a centralized stormwater. Because of the way the land lays and some of the water is less usable than others, which would allow the rest of the land. To be more developed and have higher density. And so uh, the project that we're talking about would require stormwater. And because we have um, the.
I have every, I know, I.
Okay, I'll find it.
Would you?
Um, and so the idea here would be because we already have contractors out on the hands department. If we can get this done in the fall, there would be no better time to get the stuff down on railroad if we combine those two into their part of the scope. That particular project, um, opinion of probable cost is $200,000. And that will create again a regional stormwater pond out there along with drainage, engineering and the full shebang. And so that.
Sarah, I just emailed you the concept plan.
Maybe you can, Sarah, try again. And so essentially, the second motion you would make would be say um, contingent on approval. Of the developers um, MOU tonight, we would move forward with. With the, with adding the stormwater and drainage on Railroad Avenue. Sarah can kind of pull that up.
I'm trying.
Hopefully quickly.
Here we go.
So this is the concept plan that we've been using all along. Lot one has been sold. Lot two is what we'll be looking at. The regional stormwater pond is in that back corner. And if you see how the topography flows uh, very uh, steeply to the northeast. Uh, it would make sense to put stormwater there so that all those one acre lots conceivably to the south. Can develop without having to chew up valuable land to cite their own stormwater onsite. Because by DNR rules, if they're developing more than an acre, they have to have their own stormwater, which is expensive. And ch, and just choose up land if everybody's doing it on their own. So um, Matt, is there anything I missed on that?
No, I don't think so. It's a good summary. And as you kind of said, once with a grader already there working, you're gonna get your best bang for the buck. Or most efficient time doing it. Um, and I'd say similar to the other concept, you can see all the water that goes through there. So doing it in the non-springtime also, I think makes sense.
So you want, um, you'd said kind of what you wanted a motion to be, and I saw Steve writing, so.
I have up to contingent on approval of developer MOU regarding the stormwater retention.
So we have a developer who's ready to move forward on lot two that we'll talk about later tonight. For that to move forward, we have to obligate ourselves to putting in the stormwater. And so if that doesn't move forward.
We don't.
Then we don't necessarily need to do it now, although could choose to do it now, right? Because again, this is a long-term plan. It's not just for this developer, but certainly um. It's coming up now because now would be the time where we are going to accept that MOU, we need to obligate ourselves to do this.
I'll shoot again. I make a motion, contingent on the approval of the developer MOU. The city will install a stormwater retention pond on lot two?
Out lot one.
Oh, out lot one, sorry. Thank you.
The only thing is it would be other necessary stormwater. Amenities.
Yeah.
Stormwater facilities. You can see that drainage line running up the east end of the property. So it's part of it is about doing the grading to install those, those regional stormwater ditches. Just stormwater in general on the property.
Stormwater, yeah, thank you.
Lori's got it.
Okay.
I had contingent on approval of developer MOU and we would add stormwater drainage or add stormwater drainage on the railroad avenue to the bed. That's what.
This is Todd. I second the motion.
That's what you said. So we've got a, is that good, Steve? Yeah, perfect.
Yes.
Get a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Or do you want to do a roll call? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So. So Cheryl's gonna take two minutes and then we're going to take a break. Unless we need to take a break, if somebody, if we need, huh? All right, two minutes, Cheryl, come on up. So item number thirteen is discussion. Sure. So discussion with possible action on change of effective date of water utility rate increase. Take it away, Cheryl.
Okay, so the council approved a 3% increase in the water rates effective October 1st on July 29th. The PSC requires the utility to publish the rate increase in the city newspaper and in our case, the Vernon County Times. At least 45 days prior to the effective date. So for this rate case, it would have been August 15th and no later. The notice was published on Wednesday, August 13th, but it was incorrect. The notice was published, was not, the notice that was published was not the one that I sent, nor that I approved when they sent me the mockup. Um, turns out that they now use AI to produce notices. So even though I sent the required PSC notice, AI decided be to mock up their own. Um, it had the wrong effective date, it had the wrong rates, it had the wrong increase, and it even had the wrong utility in this notice. So um, I immediately called the newspaper and um, was given the explanation. That yes, AI did actually write my notice, even though the one I sent was the correct one. Unfortunately, I called the PSC and they will not let me make an exception. Or they will not make an exception for this error because the state statute is very clear. And it does say it needs to be published in the paper and it needs to be at least 45 days. So they did tell me that I would need to resubmit the application, which is not a problem. I can do that. And they suggest using a November 1st, 2025 effective date. So I did speak with Lori and Lori felt that it was okay to bypass the formal approval from Public Works. Just make sure that I did update them and go directly to council to ask for revision from October 1st to November 1st. Of 2025.
This is Emma. I make a motion that we make a revision from October 1st to November 1st.
Got a motion a second. Steve?
How, how, how do we guarantee that this doesn't happen again though?
Well, I know I'm a little nervous about that. Um, it, it's deeply concerning that. The notice that I took off of the PSC website, which they produce with very specific language, very specific format. Is the one I sent to the newspaper. It's the mockup they sent back to me and somewhere between what they sent for my approval to what was published. Their reasoning is that AI changed it. I have been assured, because I have told them how much revenue we're losing and what's. Issues they are causing us, that they will follow it through from start to finish. Uh, PSC will not let me do anything different. The law has not changed with times yet. It does require publishing in a newspaper.
Right. Does that answer? I, well, I mean, that's, that it can. Any other questions? We've got a motion a second on the floor. Is there any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Fingers crossed.
All right. So we're gonna take like five to few minutes break here. All right, we are, we're back here. We are gonna move on. So item number fourteen um, is regarding the municipal solid waste agreement. We're gonna go ahead and table that. And in its place, we're actually gonna move uh, 21 up, which is the. And in its place, we're actually gonna move uh twenty-one up, which is the kind of the not closed session part of it, right? So twenty-one is a possible closed session, but it's talking about development out there. But we have the developer here, so we're gonna talk about that before we move into closed session. And then we'll actually put twenty-one back down where it belongs. And if we have to go into closed session, we'll do that then. We're gonna do the same thing with twenty-three. So we're gonna let Joe kind of go through his proposal now. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll sort of uh lay the table as Sarah showed that map of the Hanson Farm. Um, the property in question, and I I haven't said about it. So this is the property in question. You can see here, uh, this is the multifamily parcel, it's approximately two point five acres sometime ago. And you can still still see this is an older version of this map. Uh, the name Riverland is written on here as part of multifamily. We had met with two gentlemen who came here before um and had sort of planted their flag and said, we want to do this. And the council had reviewed their project, which aligned very closely with the concept plan. Given their approval to move forward and work on it. And about a month thereafter, they walked away. They said, you know, for various reasons, this isn't gonna work. Um, Joe Gunderson of six oh eight plumbing, also a member of the fire department, not that he needs special treatment because of that, but he's very involved in the community is my point. Uh, well, you can choose to specially, give him special treatment. Um, had uh had been asking about it. And uh at that point, we said, you know, Joe, we would we would love to entertain your project, but we've already given sort of our commitment to this other group. Once that group left, Joe sort of came in. And as I said earlier in the meeting, that's the reason why he is behind the others is because he got a late start, because there was another developer sort of sat on the project. So with that, Joe has been to VDA multiple times uh with his uh project proposal. And the two that I sent out as part of your packet were the concept plans that they reviewed uh last week Tuesday. And basically said it's 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 time now for the council to sort of give their direction. Again, with the Hanson Farm in particular, as I said in my email when I sent this out, we have been looking for preliminary approval of the concept plan. Uh, so that there's confidence for both the developer and myself and the VDA that we're moving in the right direction before we start to commit a lot more time and effort and and money to this. So that's what we're looking for tonight is again, that preliminary um approval of the concept plan to sort of give that to Joe so he can continue to working on it. And then eventually, uh, as with some of the other developers, we'll be back here with an MOU and eventually a development agreement. So again, those are the steps. Any questions? Okay, Joe, I have these um queued up. I'm gonna start with sort of the one that was the uh that came out of VDA as their number one option. That works for you.
Yep, yeah, sounds great.
So that's just gonna take a second to load here.
All right, um, so for my concept plan here, uh, I think originally um, the original concept plan had thirty-four units, I want to say. Um, I changed things around a little bit, opened up a little bit more green space in the middle. And uh, so instead of having two twelve unit buildings, um, I elected to have two uh six-unit buildings on the north end of the property. Uh, and then the in the on the southern side, two eight-unit buildings. Um, and then along with the row houses on the east side of the property. I I did try to fit a few more. We had a a couple variations of this where we had um we had some more, two more eight-unit, there is a eight-unit and a six-unit where the row houses are on the east side of the property. Um, that was the other variation, but we decided to uh use this as our um, you know, as our primary plan. And then we added in a green space for community gardening into the middle of the plan. Um, there was actually, this plan is the, this is the one with the parking on the other side. I don't know if that matters right.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're you're dead on. Let me you send a updated revision. Use this one instead.
All right, um, with the the flow of this, it would uh open it up to be a a great communal space in the middle um with a essentially, I would like to have it be for a mix of of rentals and owner occupied buildings. So it would be um uh, you know, I'd really like to create a really nice harmonious space for um for the the younger generation or the people that I I wanted to build this um as kind of affordable luxury with you know, with a a lot of, you know, as many amenities as we could fit in there for uh for the price, so. Were there uh, I guess I could go into the buildings a little bit. We had the six-unit buildings. Um, those are gonna be a mix of uh, there's gonna be two sorry, there's gonna be four two-unit, two-bedroom units, um, and then two uh, three-bedroom units in them. Um, it'd approximately be eight hundred to a thousand square feet per unit. Um, same thing with the the eight units, they're pretty much the exact same thing, but adding one more uh, two-bedroom unit onto the end. The um, so they'll be, they'll be two-story, but they'll be, there'll be a second floor unit and a first floor unit above stacked, one on top of the other. Um, on the east side, the row houses will be yeah, two-story, but it'll be, it'll be a tuck-under garage. Um, and then there will be the living space on or the, you know, the the living room, kitchen. Um, you know, bathroom on the main floor and bedrooms upstairs. We had I toyed around with trying to make it for uh ma- you know, make a bedroom on the first floor. And I would try, I'm gonna see if I can modify the plan to make that work. Um, that way it would open it up to, you know, some retirement age um buyers for those row houses.
So Joe, I don't know if you want me to add, put the exterior view on here that you've submitted some time ago. I know it might change slightly from that.
Yeah, I actually had some other ones. I don't know. I know it's, it was kind of last minute. I pulled up um some of the the views from, I could send over to you right now if you want, but you could start off with those ones and um, these are the initial plans that that came over.
So here's sort of the stacked. Uh, this would be a sixplex. Right?
That would be the sixplex.
Yeah, and then just kind of a a floor plan. And again, I think this was viewed as being somewhat conceptual, but sort of gave um, when we get this early in the con- concept plan, it's it's not frequent where a developer will come with fully flesh renderings. We usually use, I guess, we call them inspiration photos, kind of say what direction they're leaning towards. And then I I guess to a certain degree, this is a little bit more of the floor plan you'd like to use with some adjustments.
Yeah, there'll be a few minor modifications to that. Uh, like I said, the, there'll be a third bedroom added on to uh the middle unit. Uh, and then basically the eight unit is gonna be the about the same as this. Um, we will have, you know, obviously, these are gonna have have to be architecture, architecture drawn, state and state approved plans. So um I am in the preliminary stages of this right now, pretty much ready to, as soon as we get the the go-ahead, ready to pull the trigger to to get these drawn up. Um, and there may be, you know, a couple minor things that we're are gonna have to change because these are, these are like nationally. Yeah, and that they're they're fine for everywhere, they're not necessarily um, Wisconsin approved. So those, you know, those changes, there might be a few minor changes that we need to make. But this is the basic concept for it.
Then did you want to go into the other plan just because that was part and parcel of of what VDA kicked forward?
Yeah, yeah, we could do that too.
Two-story houses that are basically usually pull under garages, but they're basically identical units. And that's because they're in a row.
Like brownstone, you'd see like in a big city where they're smashed together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These all joined or they're separate? The row houses?
The row houses will all be joined.
They have common.
So it's not like a shotgun house that they're, I mean, it kind of is, but they're all joined or something.
Yeah.
They all have a shared property.
I think if they weren't, we would need to put fifteen feet in between each one. And um we'd lose a lot of, a lot of the identity that we're looking for there.
So there's two buildings, there's a s- a six row house and a five. So you can see there's a separation here with a little bit of green space, trees and things like that, just to sort of break it up. This was the uh other plan that Joe brought forward again. Um, I don't think on this one you switched around the parking yet, but in instead of the row houses, there was that six and that eight unit uh that he brought forward. I believe the motion from VDA was that the first one you saw was the one that they really want to afford because it was most in line with the concept plan and the right and I think Joe's on board with that unless um for financial feasibility reasons, he identifies that this option is really the only way to get it off the ground. Then uh we would sort of say, okay, this is option B. Okay, now that's just what the VDA kicked to you, but you can make your own sort of motion on what the plans are. But um Joe, is there anything you want to say to that before the group jumps in?
Um. No, I I covered parking was a little bit of a topic that came up before. So instead, we have on this one a lot of parking spots out front. Um, with having the the individual units having their own garage, that would open up the covered parking. Um, so I I will say that's kind of uh gonna be one of the the benefits to the other plan, however. Um, yeah, like, like you had mentioned, to to have two plans. Um, I mean, the this one um was the one that we started off with running the numbers on. So having um, thi- this is, all the math is done off of this plan. Um, you know, as long as the, as long as the the numbers come back and financially this, the other one makes sense, I don't see an issue with doing either one of them. Uh, I think it might have the other one too, might create a little bit more diversity in the area and um I'm not looking to have all these buildings be just like one color, um, you know, like and be just blah there. I'd like to have them so that they're, you know, very appealing and I, that they do attract, you know, some higher-end buyers and you know, the the type of people that we want to bring into the Verona area.
Which ones are the ones that would be owned?
Um, so the, the way that I want to do it is I would, I want to have it so there's a mix. Um, there will be a an association of sorts that's gonna be implemented here. So um that'll be it's, it'll be pretty much up to my discretion. Um, I am looking to to sell off about forty percent of them currently. Um, and so for like, so the units per building, it wouldn't be specific buildings. However, the uh by the time that, so the the last part, the last phase of this project would be the row houses. Um, those will probably be, make the most sense to to sell off. Um, since they're, it's kind of a standalone house.
Um, just to clarify, were you saying just with the ones, the, is it the six-unit ones where it's two stories?
Mm-hmm.
And those are the ones where you were talking about be more accessible for people that are older, if it's like main floor?
Uh, so the row houses were the ones that I was trying to have the main floor bedroom on. Um, all the, so all the the six units and the eight units, they'll have first floor access to to all the, all the first floor units. There'll be the the second floor units on the, you know, above them. Um, there won't be any elevators, there, it's just gonna be stairs. There will be um, there will be supposed uh, there'll be two means of egress in every single unit since they're they're condos, it's gonna be um like it's its own house, every single one of them, but just in a high-density format. Um, I did email over that other was the the rendering of the row houses in the the preliminary floor plan for them.
But this would be, you said your row houses?
Yep.
So these are always gonna be two floors, right? So this is your this is your main.
The
Oh, upper living, thank you. Lower end, so then you have your garage. So at this point, again, what we're looking for and Joe's looking for is just general direction about both plans. I think he wants feedback on both plans and just general. Again, we're looking for preliminary approval to tell us like, yep, you're in the right direction. Joe's kind of our lead horse on this property now and we'll continue to work with him on getting to MOU and development agreement phase. Um, if there's anything where you feel like, hey, I want to talk about this, but it has to do with our bargaining position as we make deals. You can always reserve that conversation for closed session later in the meeting, as as Justin said. But again, we've been fairly open about this project in VDA. Joe's here looking to a certain degree for feedback. And so if you don't want to go into closed session and you just want to say, hey, I'll make a motion to move forward with this as a concept plan, you can also do that. There's nothing wrong with that.
And we can do that now. We don't have to come back at the tail end, right?
Yep.
Feedback and or preliminary approval.
Right. So thoughts, questions, concerns, primarily concerns, I guess, at this point, right? Like your
Or the question.
Anything, yeah, go ahead.
You said uh uh there's gonna be an association attached with this, like the whole development?
Yeah.
Um, so were they, the association care, will take care of the yards, that sort of thing, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, and then um, is it just your section or is it the whole? I guess.
Uh, it would be, it'd be the whole area.
No, um the other developers would just, just be your
Oh, yeah.
Just making sure.
Yep, I would uh kind of want to implement that just to make sure that like, for instance, the green space is taken care of. The the community garden, I wanted that to, you know, before the, you know, for all the tenants there. Um, and you know, I I just don't want it to go and get out of hand, you know?
Right, that's, I I guess that's why I was concerned about there. There was a concern there, I guess.
Can I just ask a question about the ownership and rental, like who's owning the rentals?
Um, I I would be.
That wasn't, that was what I got, guys, I'll make sure.
As a reminder, what we had kind of approved, wasn't Riverland basically two twelve-unit? So they were bigger, not as diversified as this plan, which I like the diverse diversified.
Yeah, it was two, it was two twelve-units and ten row houses.
Okay.
And so this would be um, I think it was four I'm trying to think here, four to five more units, so that was thirty-four and I think, what are we at, thirty-nine?
We're at thirty-nine for this, yeah.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine or forty-two, depending on which.
Yeah.
Right, yep, so thirty-nine, forty-two, so significantly more density.
AJ's really good a man.
He is.
We learned that.
Recently.
I'd make a motion that we approve the concept plan with the row houses. I'd make a motion that we approve the concept plan with the row houses.
I would second that motion.
I was just gonna add a comment, I really like the row houses over the two-story, just myself. Really lovely, and I like the communal space a lot.
And I was gonna point out earlier and then I decided not to, but I will now, the the reason the VDA forwarded the row house idea is kind of their number one concept is because that's the concept plan that the council adopted, so I think that makes sense to kind of go that way. Are you wanting, Nate? Is that, is that okay, or would you like them to consider a second option? Yeah, no, I mean, it's okay. Or would you?
I I think it's more for Joe, um to be honest with you, like Joe has come forward and noted that um and I'll speak for you, if I get you wrong, that he would like to have his options a little bit more open and flexible at this time as he continues to run numbers on this, so I think he would like to see um know what your preferences are between one and two, but still have some sort of understanding where if push comes to shove, it's a second option agreeable to you, right? If this is the one he says, hey, this pencil's out, I can make this work, but it has to be not the row houses, it has to be the eight and six. I think that's part of what he's looking for from you tonight, so you can say no, but I just want to make sure there's a decision made on it.
Just a question, does the timeline change if it's instead of road houses, it goes to the eight and six building, like, would you build them all at the same time then, or was?
Uh no, the, so it would pretty much stay the same timeline. Just in lieu of having building, I think it's building three and building, so it'd be building three and then building seven. It would be the row houses that are in the place of building three instead. Um I guess the, the the row houses came as kind of, we reverted back to those as an afterthought. Um and I do really like the look of them, I like the concept, I'm I'm falling in love with that plan. Um I'm pushing for that more than, you know, more than anybody, um the only reason why it would be have to go back was, you know, if it, if it just didn't make sense financially, which I think that there's gonna be more of an appeal to the row houses. So I don't see an issue with that, but I I guess I would like the um I'd like the, the opportunity to, to change, but you know, to to build the um the six unit and the eight unit in the place of the row houses, if it didn't make sense financially.
I guess my question would be, couldn't you change something on the other buildings to allow yourself to have the finances to do the row housing?
Um possibly, I get, that's, I don't, I just, what what do you have in mind?
Oh, I I don't know, making them smaller or something, I just think the row houses are a real real, yeah, real nice, yeah, real asset.
I, oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I do too, um that's why I I'm pushing for those more than anything and that's like in, unless they really look to be underwatered from the get-go, it's
It's the cost of building them can be extensive.
Something else smaller.
I I do too, but I'd I'd be, I'd be reluctant to to lose quality and s- and and units on the other ones just to accomplish that, I think high-density housing is really the the mindset in this entire development, so I hundred percent agree with you and having them, but I think to Joe's point, I and I think tonight if we if we approve this plan as a row house plan and if you get into a situation where all of a sudden, gosh, this isn't gonna work, it might I think leaving it to come back to the group to show us what you're thinking would probably be the way to do that rather than to us to, to approve that. Do this or that, would that make you, I mean, because then we have time to think about it too and he can come back with a really nice design and would be like, oh, that's a good compromise. Or no, we ate it, go back to the row house.
And I would be, uh I would be fine with that, I just don't want to close the door on that option if we ever, you know, if we get down the road and find out hey, this isn't gonna work out.
And that's a good part about this step, I think, from the city's perspective, this, we're agreeing to a concept, right? Now, there's a lot of work that comes after. I think there's a lot that we can work through later on, unless you have fundamental issue with that, Nate.
Yeah, I, sorry, I don't however you guys want to do it, it really is, I just wanted to bring that up because that's something, like Joe and I have worked quite a bit, we have a lot of conversations, and I and I know where he stands and I don't want it to be left unsaid or the question left unasked, and so if if the motion that's on the table right now is agreeable to everybody, great, and Joe and I can can work off of that, I think he's noted that and I think what you said is if we get into a position where like, hey, we really need to, it's time to circle back to the to the council and have this conversation again, at least you've been um introduced to it, at this point, that this is something that Joe's thinking.
Yeah. So we have a motion in a second, don't we? Any other questions? Not, I think we would go, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks, Joe.
Awesome, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, sorry about, that was a long one tonight. All right, so what we did there, eh we're gonna go ahead and do the same thing with item number twenty-three, which is um regarding uh live-action storage review in MOU. And we've got Darren on the line with us, who's also been very patient and waited for this, so I appreciate your patience, Darren.
Yep.
It it's somewhere in here, hang, hang tight, folks, there's, there's a lot of stuff on on the screen here. And none of it is what I need. So Chad Olson's project, uh I think everybody uh should remember, Chad he has done live-action storage one, which is this series, the mini storage unit, that was developed just north of John Emmons's ag implement shop on Nelson Parkway and Atbury Road, Air Airport Road, County Road BB, whatever name it has within the five-block radius. Um and so he's come back forward with a a development that he would like to see on that railroad avenue property just south of where shade hit. Um the proposal was sent to you yesterday. And I will bring it up here and Darren, just briefly can talk about it, this is one where we would like to hear from the developer, maybe have a little bit of conversation, but because we're at MOU phase, I would say hold off on finishing the conversation, we can get to vote, close session later. That make sense, everybody? So Darren, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, you're coming through great, so um I have on screen Darren, you should be able to see it, and we can just walk through this real quick. Um well, that's the memorandum of understanding, here's the actual um package that was put forward um by Darren on this particular.
So if you could go, keep going there. Um so the project is really two types of buildings, um and I'm, I'm here for Chad, Chad's on vacation. Um the first type of building is building A, and it's kind of a new concept in this area, it's a like a business suite, business condo, a business storage, there's lots of different names for it, but essentially what, what it is is a a very, not very, but a a more fancy storage building, it's geared towards space for a business to rent. The spaces are larger, each unit has its own bathroom, they're heated. Um they, they could have an office. Um in the chance case here, there'll be an overhead door in the front off of uh Railroad Avenue and a loading dock in the back. Uh he wants to give them that option, this lot slopes from Railroad Avenue to the east somewhere near at twenty-two feet, it drops. Um so each one of these buildings are gonna drop about six feet. Um then there'll be a road down the south side to access them, but back to the business suite, it's it's more geared towards, oh, like FedEx or uh someone that needs climate control stor- storage, um it could also be a a place where they they would actually have people in there uh with the business. Um the units in the building itself be classified as S-two storage with the state. But depending on the use of the occupant per unit, that's when you define more the HVAC system. Um um so these are real hot over in Milwaukee, I've done oh, probably thirty thousand square feet of these are fast, uh the other three buildings, yeah, they're, they're neat. So you can see the units are larger than your normal storage unit, each one has a bathroom. We're probably gonna add offices to them as an option, you could even add the intermediate uh opening in the wall if a, if a business wanted to rent two of them. You know, you could combine two units into one. Um the other three units or buildings are your standard self-storage, similar to what he built on Nelson Parkway. Um again, yeah, that's the front of the, this, the building A, the business suites. Um trying to make them more classy than your standard, you know, self-storage units, windows and some soffit exterior accents, um it really is to draw business and potentially jobs, um. It it, like I say, there's a gamble on who would rent these, so I mean, it could be a small automotive place, uh if you do your HVAC right, it could be a wood shop, it could be, you know, who knows, but with the heat, the office and the bathrooms, uh there's lots of outfits there for renting. Um I guess that's about it for that building, and the other ones are pretty self-explanatory. Um the main thing for the lot is the stormwater, we talked before, or you had talked about the pond in the back. Uh the idea for the stormwater for this lot is to there you can kind of see how the building stepped down as you go from west to east. Um the concept here and the pond, I have the grading pond done, the it it naturally flows to the east and it would flow into the pond that that the city is gonna build as the regional pond in the back, very, very well-suited for this development, um. The MOU that you're looking at, maybe I, maybe you don't want to talk, me to talk about this, Dave, but that has the city committed to having a pond done by the end of next year. Uh Chad wants to get going on the grading this year and possibly get a foundation in the ground for one of the buildings. Um I think the MOU sets up one building per year starting with completion of one of them next year and the following four years. Um
So just no, that's great, Darren, um I'll I'll just elaborate again when we were talking earlier about the expansion and the scope of the infrastructure on Hanson Farm to be railroad avenue, this is the MOU I was talking about that would necessitate with that said, as long as we have Darren online here who's designed the project, does anybody have any questions regarding the packet you've received, and then we can go over the MOU later tonight, hopefully not too much later tonight.
Short.
Shortly, there we go.
I might have missed something, I'm really tired, but you mentioned heating, but it's also
I couldn't make that all.
So Darren, she was asking about heating, climate control for building A, that assumes cooling in the summer?
Um no, does not, um I would it, right now it's heating in the only, um I would assume there could be an option for a renter that wants cooling. Um I just went through this today with a client in Milwaukee about HVAC, he's building about twenty-four thousand square feet of these. And we designed them off with no heating. Today, he came back with, we have to redesign the HVAC and put AC in, you know, some of them as options. So it could be that the state-approved plan that we do has an option for cooling. It all depends on who the renter is. The, I should note too, if, you know, if if there are things like uh anything with a a engine is starting these vehicle or whatnot, then that would kick in a different HVAC system too, and again, that would be an option that Chad would offer to the potential renter, but the base units are heat only. I don't know, Nate, uh the the concept of a white space, is that?
Yeah, white box finish, yeah, we've, we've talked
Yeah.
a little bit. I think
That's kind of what these are.
With the idea of one building per year is the goal, that the business condo would be the last year or somewhere mixed in the middle, does he go east to west?
I can answer that, the MOU has building B going up first and then building A.
Okay.
And then C and D after that.
Isn't that kind of what he did uh propose on the first set of buildings, one a year? But I think that's went a lot faster than what he
Yeah, that went about double as fast.
Yeah, but he accelerated that.
Right, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and I think those were successful.
Right, yeah, yeah, and I I don't see this going for five years either.
No, I I don't either.
Is there any other ques- so I think the idea of letting Darren go is, if we have any specific questions for him, otherwise, well.
I I just want to add too that the grading of that pond, the regional pond would work in at hand with the grading of Chad's lot. Cause we're a little short on fill and you're gonna be a little in excess of fill, and you're right there. So.
Yeah, and and that won't be a part of an MOU, we're gonna sort of
No.
We're gonna see how that goes because the stormwater pond hasn't been designed. Yeah, so we, we will make good neighbors.
Right.
Uh once we identify what kind of pond and things we're working with, but yeah, Darren's
Is there an occupancy like issue, like, can people live in these things?
No.
So, no, that that is something that Darren and I talked about a little bit and uh again, people can use properties incorrectly, that we've run into issues of that, so that'll be something that we'll have to keep an eye on and if we ever get wind of people residing there.
That's actually a problem they've had with these in other communities and it all comes down to the hook on mi- municipality, you know, overseeing what the accuracies are.
Any other questions for Darren? All right, it's not, we're, thank you, Darren, we're gonna back onto the regular agenda and we'll come back to this later, so I appreciate you hanging out as long as you did.
So I'll stick around.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
All right, I gotta find where we're at here, item number fourteen, which is review and approval of pay request number two for the Verona Welcome Center. Fifteen. Fifteen. We skipped fourteen, we're on fifteen, I I read fifteen, but I must have said fourteen, so review and approval of pay request number two for the Verona Welcome Center. We skipped fourteen, we're on fifteen. I read fifteen, but I must have said fourteen. So review and approval of pay request number two for the Verona Welcome Center is number fifteen. And that is the number we are on.
So that's up on the screen right now. This pay request was part of your packet. The one that Lori has now was also reviewed and approved not only by the architect, which is Mark Zettler, but also by Levi Sisbach. Who is our third-party independent inspector. And they've approved the amount of ninety-eight one fifty-two. You'll see some notes on the pay requests with regards to. And I'm sorry, in the interest of time, I'm not going to rotate this unless somebody really wants to. Cindy, you've been, had really tight eyes on this project. Her and I are at every construction meeting of which we've had probably four or five now. And is there anything you want to say to this particular?
Just that the tuck pointing, they've been working a lot on that on the outside and doing something called switch ties, you know, those. Cracks on the north side of everybody talked about. They use something called metal and it's some kind of a switch tie they call it.
Stitch tie.
Stitch tie. I'm sorry, can't read my own writing. And then they add mortar to that and different, I think it's some gluey stuff, epoxy first. But anyway, that's what they've been doing. And inside they've had us pick what we want for the. Interior to seal the walls inside and the demolition, they've gotten them. They've been demolishing some of the walls in the boy's side for the meeting space. They couldn't do as much as they wanted until they got the electricity and Excel finally hooked them up last week. So. But that's the major things they, like I said, they've knocked down some of the walls that they needed to. They've opened. The south side for the patio door. They're working now on, oh, the big one, the front door. You remember, we couldn't even open the front door for a long time. So they took that, they had to take that all apart, take all the stone down that was above it. They have a concrete, they called it a concrete header now. And they use a stain that matches the color of the stone. So you don't really know it's a concrete. And now they've rebuilt the wall yesterday. It looks so pretty. So and they're cracking the, when you went into the girl's side, they fixed that. So just a lot of exciting things like that. They've decided to put the roof on next because of this good weather that we're having. Get that on before it decides to rain all the time in October when it has a tendency. They wanted to get the floors up first when they had all that open air. But they, because they waited so long for the electricity, they're probably going to switch. That's my understanding why they had to wait. And then they're going to do the roof. But that's the big thing is just lintels and the tuck pointing and. Picking out the areas that they need to, the walls and. It's just, it's coming along now that they have electricity though.
It's been good collaboration, good communication. The contractor has been very pleasant to work with. Mark's been doing a great job in terms of keeping an eye, asking a lot of really good questions and Levi was there and had some good input as well. So. I mean, from my angle, I think this pay request has been reviewed nicely and I think it's appropriate to pay at this point.
Does he make a motion that we approve the pay request number two for the local welcome center in the total of ninety-eight thousand, one fifty-two and ten cents?
Steve, I'll second.
You got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Seth.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
Emma.
Hi.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
And Steve.
Hi.
All right, item number sixteen, review and approval of pay request number one for, is it O'Shea, O'Shea Construction? Salt Shed Project.
Yeah, O'Shea.
O'Shea.
All right, well, this is pretty straightforward. This is our first pay request for the salt shed. Essentially at the time of submission here, if you could scroll down. When it basically like there's a general construction line item. And so we obviously had a percentage of that and the inspector felt like that was an appropriate quantity for the work that was done. So, long story short, a hundred and forty-seven thousand, two fifty is the current pay request. You can see a lot of concrete out there, which is great. So that's where the salt touches. We wanted, we wanted on the concrete. So far, so good.
Make a motion, we pay pay request number one for O'Shea Construction.
This is Crystal, I'll second.
You got the number. All right, any questions?
One hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty.
All right, roll call.
Andrew.
Hi.
Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
Emma.
Hi.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
And Seth.
Hi.
All right, item number seventeen, update and approval on maintenance contract for annual generator maintenance.
Okay, that's right. The total energy systems, I can't remember if it was in there or not.
It was not in the packet. I did not have it.
Oh yeah, I'm up here. Okay, so. This is for our generators. What preempted it was that our well six generator is not operating properly. It's operating, but it's not. Outputting the energy cleanly essentially. And it's causing the system to say, hey, we don't like this and shut down. So. We had our well guys out there. They suggested that we have the total energy systems. That's a Kohler. Distributor service provider in the area to come and look at it. When they came, when we asked them to come, they said, we certainly can, but this is much more economical for you guys to have a maintenance agreement with us. Because we're going to come and do all the stuff and very likely the fix is something they would address. Like it's a tuning issue, not necessarily. Hopefully, you know, something larger than that. And this is something that we've gone back and forth with for a really long time. So when we first installed well six back in two thousand seventeen, we debated about doing this maintenance agreement at the time. And decided that Mark, our mechanic, would be able to take care of it. He's a very busy guy and he's got a lot of responsibility. And I think that. Based on the recommendation of the well guy, he's like, you really want somebody who services generators to take a look at this generator rather than. Sort of somebody that's more jack of all trades. Which I think is probably an accurate statement. So that's where we started. And then Greg and I started talking about the fact that we have another Kohler generator that's at the wastewater plant. And that one also, we are probably not up in maintenance as far as we need to with it. And then, of course, that gets cascaded into all of these other conversations about our generators. What was happening though is the more we added, the less it costs per unit. So the first one, when we looked at it, it was sixteen hundred. Yeah. Was sixteen hundred. A lot of it is like the mobilization on site. And so now per unit roughly, it's eleven seventy-five. One of the things that we don't do is load bank testing. We, at the time, felt like we were loading the generator enough. With, because we're running the well, but they're really designed to take more of a load than what is. The well is doing itself. We also know that the well is not pulling the same amount of volume that we originally expected. So it's just not working as hard. So low bank test essentially just pushes it to the limit, right? And they run it for two hours and make sure everything's working. Apparently, certain facilities like a hospital, that kind of thing is required to do this annually. They have to do a four and a six, or four and a two and a two on rotation every year, like three years in a row. And so really us really look hard about like, how much do we want to put up? That we're hoping we're doing enough. And I think that we all decided based on where we're at, the fact that there clearly needs to be some work on it. We struggled with, well, our wastewater treatment plant generator, that really we should be getting something more solid here. So with this contract, he's gives us a locked-in price for three years, but we can cancel it anytime. So we could just do one year, be done, say, no, we don't want to do it anymore. It's a thirty-day cancellation. But I have experienced firsthand the benefit of locking in a price for a period of time. And we had our tower inspection, they miscalculated the timeframe that it ended and it like almost doubled in price. So like, I like the idea that we're at least have the option of locking it in. So Greg and I went back and forth and like, what exactly are we doing out of all of these options? And so what we thought would be the best option is to service, have an annual contract for each of these generators. So one's at well five, well six, and then there's a pull behind, which is what we use all over the place. We use it at our lift stations when they, when we lose power if we need it, but we also can use it on well four. It's a very valuable generator for us. They are slightly different models, ones to Cummins or Tourer Cummins and Tourer Kohler. But it, but we felt like rather than pull another entity in, like, let's just get it all done in one. The price difference that you see is that well five is a natural gas generator and the rest are diesel. So what we're proposing is doing the service with the testing of the fuels. There's not that much and I think it's a good benefit on each of them. And then alternate the load bank testing. So even though it is in a high-level facility like a hospital. Recommended to be doing that annually, like they basically said, like, you probably don't need to be doing that annually. And it's seven hundred and fifty dollars. So it's not nothing. So what we thought was well wastewater treatment plant and well six. Well, six being that it's currently something that we're worried about and wastewater treatment plant, just because it's not like the wells where it has redundancy. If the wastewater plant does not have a generator and we lose power, we are done. So. Long story short, oh boy, I did the math and I think I've already flipped my page. If we were to do all the items without doing the load bank testing this year for well five and six, and then we can go back, or excuse me, well, the trailer. And well five, and we can go back next year and do it for that. It would put us at seven thousand and fifteen dollars. It is hard for me to want to spend this much money, but I just feel like there are certain parts of our system that are so super critical. And this is not something we want to have problems with. So I think it's a good insurance policy for us. That's the recommendation. It would be. What, the wells obviously are water, sewer is the wastewater plant, and then the trailer would be split.
And that's seven thousand annually?
That's seven thousand annually in all, in total.
And that's in your budget?
Sort of. I mean, the waste with the water and sewer utility don't truly have the same kind of budget. And there's a lot more cushion in there because. We can't take from other parts of the general fund, for example, like from the fire department and cover something like we are, we are it, right? And so, yes, we can cover it. Cheryl has reviewed it.
Thank you. Other questions?
This is Crystal and I would move that we update and approve the maintenance contract for the. For annual generator maintenance at the amount of seven thousand fifteen dollars a year for three years.
This is Emma and I second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
Emma.
Hi.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Seth.
Hi.
And Andrew.
Hi.
All right, item number eighteen, discussion with possible action on traffic signal preventative maintenance contract.
Okay, so this is in front of you only because it's a contract. It's such a small amount of money and it's something we do every single year. So I feel like it's a no-brainer. Tapco services all our traffic signals. So we are very lucky to have the DOT interested in helping us. They do more work for us for free than they probably should. However, we can't rely completely on them. And so this is our Tapco. They come and look at each of our intersections that are lighted. So three of them, it's five twenty-five per intersection, same sort of deal.
I make a motion, we approve the traffic signal preventive maintenance contract. And you said, what was the amount? Five?
It's five twenty-five per intersection. Oh, excuse me, too late, five twenty-six.
Todd will say it.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Emma.
Hi.
Todd Spade. Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Seth.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
And Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Item number nineteen, review and approval of tax incremental developer agreement payments.
Okay, I'm gonna kind of go through this rather quickly. I am going to ask that when you do do a formal approval on this, that you do a pending review by myself, the administrator. Our financial advisors have looked through these, but all of these, for those that have not been here for any of these tax increment development agreement payments. All of these development agreements that you've been working on, all these MOUs, all of that, all it comes down to is the fact that we have to pay it once a year. So the memo I sent out this afternoon kind of goes through that. We have one in tid number five, which is the GFL solid waste. Originally, it was with Southwest Sanitation and when GFL purchased them, they also purchased this part of the development agreement. And so what happens with these is I, every year I come across what they get as far as the tax bill. And then our financial advisors look at that, determine the tax increment, all of the base that they've actually gained in that year. And then they overall, if there's other development agreements and what the, what each one of them states that they have to maintain or achieve. And so they actually go through and they determine what it is that we would be paying them every year. But we still need to want to take a good look at them since I was gone last week at my conference. I didn't have a chance to really look at them as well as I'd like to. So, but they're due September first, so they have to come through this at this time. So for the GFL, the payment that they have is thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And then in tax increment number six, Ridge Land Restoration, which is the Hotel Fortney. Their development agreement, it came across as forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight. Tax district number seven would be the Felton Ford Development Agreement. They would get a payment of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars this year. And they kind of have a breakdown on some of those other pages that I, that I sent out to you. So if you have questions on this, you can. I can get back to you on them. And then the Verona Food Co-op is one of our ones from tid number six. And that has for their. That's the second memo. There was, they did them in two memos, because one is tax increment revenue. They call them those tipper bond payments. So this is a forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. And that was what they did that they kind of combined from their old one into the new one when they went into tid six from tid four. Was it four or three? It kind of, they kind of wrapped it into tid six. So those are the payments that I'm looking for approval on tonight. Contingent again upon our final review to make sure that we didn't miss something. Oh, did I miss one in there?
Yeah, you missed one.
Sorry.
It was the Vic Meyer Wangan.
Oh, it was on the backside. Tid number seven, Vic Meyer Wangan for eight thousand eighty-three dollars. Thank you.
Make a motion, we approve the tax incremental developer agreement payments pending review by Lori and Nate. And I won't go listing all those numbers.
That's fine.
This is Crystal, I'll second.
Hey, we got a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call please.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal. Steve.
Hi.
Seth.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
And Emma.
Hi.
All right, item number twenty, payment of the bills.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Todd will say it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
It's okay. Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Seth.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
Emma.
Hi.
And Todd Spade.
Hi.
All right.
Could I just say, I really appreciated the memo, how you had listed how this tax incremental stuff, it really helped under, me understand the percentages and stuff. I don't recall seeing that in the past. That was very.
This is all elders that they put all this stuff together. I just sent them the tax bill.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Done remembering it all.
Right. And, and.
I mean, we got to double check it still, but.
Right. I, I would like to tell, you know, like the development agreements, they all have a little bit of different language in them. So it's a nice to have the fact that it's.
As if we're not done yet.
No, I know. I'm just, nevermind.
Here we're moving along. I'm just, no, I agree with Cindy. So thank you very much for that.
Sorry.
We're jumping over 21 and 22 because we handled those up at number 14. So that takes us to item number 23, which is possible closed session per Wisconsin statute 1985 1E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties. Investing in public funds or conducting of other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is in regards to live action storage review of MOU.
Is Emma, I make a motion that we go to closed session.
This is Crystal. I'll second.
All right. You got a motion. A second. Roll call please.
John?
Hi.
Crystal?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Seth?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Todd Kirking?
Hi.
Emma? Todd Spade?
Hi.
And Cindy?
Hi.
Can you open them doors, Todd? Can you open a door?
All right. We're back and open.
All right. As soon as we get a door, well, I think we're good. There's nobody out there. Um, we're going to move on to item number 24, which is reconvene and open session with possible action on items discussed during closed session.
Okay. Uh, make a motion that we, approval was discussed in closed session with the can, pending review by the administrator and the changes that were discussed. How's that?
How's that, Laurie? Looks good.
This is Crystal. I'll second.
All right. Got a motion. A second. I'll wait for you. Roll call please.
Let's see. Steve?
Hi.
Seth?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Todd Kirking?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Todd Spade? Cindy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Crystal?
Hi.
We got one brave soul. Anybody, anyone who wants to make a public comment now would be the time. I think you're good, Mayor.
I'll say it then.
I.
All right.